Good evening Wakefield and welcome to the Town Council meeting of Monday, April 8, 2024. I call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM. I'd like to ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number three tonight is attendance. We have all our councilors in attendance in studio here at WCAT this evening, so thank you everyone for making it a little bit earlier than usual. Item number four is public engagement. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone online for public engagement?
Yes, we do. He's coming over right now, John Sophia.
All right, we'll give him just a moment. And while Mr. Sophia is coming over, just a reminder that we ask individuals to limit their comments to three minutes and to please state your name and address at the start of your comment. So, Mr. Sophia, please go ahead whenever you're ready. We can't hear you. I think you're on mute, sir. There we go.
I sent an email around to all the town councilors.
Mr. Sophia, if you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself with your name and address first.
My name's John Sophia, six Whittamore Terrace.
Great, and go ahead.
So basically, I sent an email around to all the town councilors this last weekend. And this was inspired by the fact there seemed to be a lot of infusion or maybe misunderstanding about the potential for the 150K from the ARP funding for pedestrian walkways along the lake. And I believe that there's a 75K that's been allocated for a walkway between Linda and the yacht club. And if I could just do this, is that that image right there shows you the parcel, this parcel right here, that's the yacht club. You all see this right here. And it's also in the email. The bottom line is that to think in terms of a walkway all the way around Lakeside Cemetery, it would be 1,400 feet, a huge project that would probably, by the time you get done with engineering, be on the order of a million dollars. This little parcel right here, Town Parcel B, that's right near the yacht club, is a perfect place to spend 150K. 75K has already been allocated here, or this section, starting this spring supposedly. But I just wanted to clarify, there was a lot of talk about eminent domain, property rights, various things. And if there's really any thought of having something productive happen from this 150K APR funding, it would not be looking at Lakeside Cemetery with all the attendant difficulties. And I've offered to give a presentation in more detail. I've got all the property records and everything going back on this. I've been working on it for two years. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Sophia. And, you know, I think just for the sake of the council, Mr. Sophia and I had had some discussion about presenting tonight. I did ask that maybe that we have him come back to a future meeting when we're able to look in this in more detail. And Mr. Mayo, I know you and I have also talked about, Mr. Sophia, maybe having you come in and meet with the town engineer as well in the meantime, just so that we can have a more, a sort of broader discussion on that at a meeting where we're not quite as pressed for time on agenda items. But appreciate all the work that you've done on this. And I know I've had a chance to see some of your research over the years, and that's certainly inspired a lot of my interest in this. And so, look forward to having a broader discussion on this soon.
I think it's a great project with some great prospects for a realizable thing in the near term. It's shovel-ready. Thanks for your time.
Great. Thank you very much, sir. Sherry, anyone else for public engagement?
Yes, we do. Julie?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. If you could give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Julie Scott. I live at 4 Central Street. Two weeks ago, the Town Council had ARPA funding discussions and then votes in order to spend about $2 million on ARPA funds. The conversations, to me, lacked a pre-planned format and process in which to move pre-established and agreed-to community goals and needs forward. This is not how our neighbors Melrose, Stonemont, and Reading make their decisions. Our town constitution is our town charter. Charter refers to a written document, an instrument that defines the government structure under which a city and town operates. It distributes powers and duties and responsibilities among local offices, and it can establish and define certain procedures to be followed by that town. What was decided on two weeks ago with the $400,000 expenditure on making the senior center top floors multi-generational meeting space, as well as the $150,000 funding for Lakeside Pathways in the cemetery area, to me, lacked proper vetting. Why was the Finance Committee, the Permanent Building Committee, or the Capital Planning Committee not involved in any of these two decisions? These two items were not vetted in ways that our town charter mandates, and they will continue to need funds from future town budgets. That should concern every Wakefield taxpayer. I see these votes as ones that circumnavigated the attention of our town charter. Our charter insists that various boards and committees act as checks and balances for our town's spending. Prior discussions by many town layers of government did not take place. In regard to the Lakeside Pathway, I heard the words boardwalks over the lakeside water, easements to use privately on land, and eminent domain. These cost money now, and they will certainly cost money in the future. So many taxpayers are driving over unkept roads and unfinished or even non-existent sidewalks. Please do not put boardwalk areas on the lake. ARPA funds are to be targeted, one-shot deals or infusions into areas of life that suffered as a result of COVID. Lakeside pathways that include boardwalks should be out of the question. And it is clear to me, based on the Town Council meeting of February 12, that the work on the water will probably be done because more office space is needed for Town Hall. For two years, our neighbor Reading has had an ARPA advisory committee set up so that it gets input from all areas of the community. Their committee includes two select board members, three finance committee members, two school committee members, and one library trustee. They built their list of ideas a year and a half ago, and they continue to work from that original list. I can view their notes and meeting minutes online. In Melrose, former mayor Paul Broder launched the Community Needs Assessment Survey to collect community feedback around the use of the city's American Rescue Plan Act funding. Community members completed the survey, which asked participants to participate, to get ideas, to identify projects of interest, and they have since offered small business opportunities. For the past two years, Wakefield residents were never given this opportunity. Stonemont sent out an ARPA community.
Ms. Scott, if you could wrap it up, you're at three minutes.
So that different groups could put in their own proposals. I hope this happens in Wakefield. I would like to see a posted breakdown of all the ARPA allocations spent this far. The American Rescue Plan Act website that Wakefield Town Hall has set up has no information about how the funding has been spent over the past few years. Taxpayers should be able to look at the Town Hall website to see what has already been allocated in the past.
Thank you.
What has been spent to this point and what has been planned for future spending. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayo, just for reference, do you recall when we sent out the ARPA survey that we did?
It was the first round of ones that we did, I want to say, well over a year ago.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that point of reference. Ms., Sherry, any further, any further public comment?
No, we are all set.
Okay.
Could I just add?
Yes, please.
And, Mr. Mayo, you provide us with quarterly updates relative to the accounting of ARPA. So at any given point, we're all apprised of that. And obviously, that's public.
Yeah, I want to say. Great, thank you. Do we have any public engagement in studio? No? All right, seeing none, let's move on to item number five, fiscal year 2025 budgets. Mr. Mayo, I don't know if you have any sort of opening comments to kick us off tonight.
Very quickly before we go, and I'm going to be very brief because I know we're up against the gun here. As the council knows, I included a memo in the package as we end our fiscal year 2025 budget odyssey. And as I've always said, each and every year certainly brings its own set of challenges. This year is no different. We're beset by inflation, something that we really didn't have in the last few years, a lack of state aid at this point in the budget cycle, and we probably won't know much more regarding state aid until after town meeting. But I do feel that the overall budget is a solid budget. And I was kind of kipissing before the meeting with some of the people that were here, is that Wakefield really, and the Town Council, is more involved in the budget process than most of the other communities. You really, you see almost every line item for every budget. And I think that's part and parcel of our success over the years. But I do think that we are also very beneficial that we have, basically, all our contracts are settled, police fire, teachers are, and my understanding that that will be ratified this week. Congratulations, Kevin, in the school committee. I am negotiating with the clerical and library unions. Their contracts expire on June 30. And I still hope to have them in time for town meeting, so that might be an agenda item at our next meeting. Although the overall increase over last fiscal year on the municipal side, I think the entire budget comes around 5.5%, municipal side is about 5.2%. I want to point out that 1% of that is really due to deductions in grants, are no longer using ARPA funds for any budgetary areas, with the exception of in the Town Council budget, because we didn't hire a position, we're just rolling that over. In both fire and in health and in schools, Health Department, not health insurance, we did have some grants that have expired, and we won't be using that money there anymore. Taking the fire department, $300,000 in the SAFRA grant that we added for firefighters. We've gone over $1 million, but now it's time for us to, three years of four firefighters is pretty good, now we have to pay. This budget includes the real beginning of succession planning, as well as supporting very important areas in human resources and in the Health Department. If we back out, as I said, all of those grants and ARPA funds, the increase is around 4.1%, which is kind of a little bit closer to where I like. But I think we have to remember that these are one-time increases. We're not going to repay for the SAFRA grant again next year. So going forward, we should be in a bit better shape. Bottom line is that while some of our surrounding communities, and I talk to them all the time, some are looking to cut programs, others are looking to pursue an override, we're in pretty good shape. So I stand by the $107 million budget presented. And I do want to thank the Town Council for their diligence, because you make us much stronger, and you've spent probably the last four months looking at budgets. So I apologize for that. And hopefully, after this meeting, you won't have to worry about it too much any longer. Thank you. Turn it over to Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. And we will start with our return of the group health insurance and human resources budget. So Kevin and Ms. Forzati, I'll give you to the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Town Council members. As you said, we're bringing this back from last meeting. I reviewed it with the board last meeting. The overall increase was 1.23%. Well, we have some large turnbacks from this year's budget. We're able to use those going forward. Group insurance rates are going up approximately 10% next year. So we'll use the savings that we have this year, carry those forward into next. That was able to bring this budget in at the 1.23%. We're bringing this back today. There were some questions about a new full-time position within this budget, and I think I will turn it over to Ms. Forzati to discuss that new position.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you. When we last met, I presented information about the group insurance portion of the budget, in which I highlighted three main areas for consideration. First, I wanted to recognize the success story that was Steve Mayo and Laurie Riley going to the group insurance commission. And since then, we have not had really any annual increase since 2013, when the town was experiencing a 10% to 15% annual increase in health insurance premiums. I also provided data showing how HR is able to positively affect the budget. It included a snapshot of our employee population and where we could still affect change in FY '25 and beyond. Our success in budget control is driven by our one-on-one employee relationship building skills. Our members rely on the information and analysis we provide, and it results in employees choosing the lowest-cost, most benefit-rich plans, saving both the town and the employee money. And the last point of the prior presentation, I felt it was important to point out the town's financial exposure within the group insurance budget. We showed that only 2/3 of eligible employees are presently enrolled in our health insurance plans. If in the event, we are to have a rush of new enrollments from the other 257 eligible employees, the estimated additional cost would be $5 million for FY '25. As you vote on this budget, and it is very lean, I just want you to understand where we are when we do that. So tonight, I wanted to provide a little more information, as requested, on the additional staff member. Our department has taken on many new responsibilities over the years, and we are at and have maintained a pace at a breaking point, where we are choosing between strategic planning and executing on day-to-day administrative tasks. We are a department of two, and we perform separate functions. Karen is the lead on payroll and benefits. I handle more of the HR functions, such as policy and process, strategic planning, recruiting, contract administration, audits and reporting, investigations, workers' compensation, unemployment, and so on. In reviewing our department needs, I ask you to consider the following. Until 2015, when I was appointed to the role, the town did not have any HR department, only employee benefits. That department had historically been staffed with a manager and an administrative assistant. In 2015, Karen Doucette rejoined the department as the HR coordinator. She had worked in the department previously, and later grew her role into the manager position with added responsibilities that it is today. Being the first HR staff, Karen and I have had the opportunity to create and implement most of the policies and practices that exist today. We wrote the first employment manual, launched townwide email for all employees, converted all users from paper to electronic advices, and went 100% electronic with all employee communications. We brought services online, including job postings, employment applications, accident reports, and we created an employee benefits online information center. We designed and implemented electronic personnel files, eliminated paper filing, centralized printing, and implemented Munis employee self-service, where employees can complete web-based timesheets, review accrual balances, payroll advices, W-2s, and update their personal contact information, tax exemptions, et cetera. In 2023, Munis would no longer support our version 11 and required us to do a mandatory upgrade to the latest version, which was 21. The only way I can really explain what that was like is switching from a flip phone to an iPhone. They both make calls, but how you do that is entirely different, and all of our staff were trained on the old version 11. Now, I mentioned last time too, I know I'm old because they all come to me and say, you know, how do you think I do this? Well, we have experience, so we're able to help out. With many of the newer employees assuming positions that perform key Munis functions, we're tasked with troubleshooting, setting up, training, and as consuming a large portion of our time. However, it's also afforded us the opportunity to see where the deficiencies are and some of the functionality that we're not yet using, which leads me to my next consideration and my final consideration. It seems the town is at a point where key personnel changes may likely be in the not-so-distant future. And the town would benefit tremendously by taking advantage of the additional functionality with an eye on succession planning. By setting up new functions, we can create streamlined access to consolidated financial data for the town's largest spend, which is payroll. Much of the work from department to department is stored outside of Munis in homegrown systems and does not provide an adequate transfer of information for succession planning. I'd like to change that. I've provided some details in the memo that you should have already received last week, and I welcome any questions or thoughts you may have.
Thank you, and thank you for the detail in the memo, and also the, I think, the explanation of where we've come from, because I think that's really important context. And I think, you know, you and Karen should be really proud as to sort of how far we've come. Let me open it up for questions from my colleagues. Counselor Smith-Galvin?
I really don't have any questions. I just find it incredible that we have an association, organization of this size, the staff has only had two people. I have two staff people. I can barely keep up with my payroll and HR. And so, I mean, hats off to you, and I completely support this addition.
Any other comments? Counselor Darmoski?
I think it's remarkable that we didn't have an HR department essentially until nine years ago. I don't even know how that's possible. I think that's not appropriate. I think it actually creates a lot of liability issues from yesteryear. I understand what you're saying, and I completely respect the work that you and Karen have done, Ms. Forzati. So by all means, my comments are not about your functioning within your department. Either of you, I think you've done a great job. But my bigger concern relates to the idea of FTE generally. And right now, we're at a point where the state is facing revenues that are not meeting benchmarks for several months. That will have a trickle-down effect to us, undoubtedly. I think there's a lot of uncertainty, Mr. Mayo, about where we stand from a state aid perspective. I don't think, sitting here tonight, we can stay with any degree of certainty where we're going to land on that. And the state itself has put a pause on hiring, and I think that should be a cautionary tale for us. I have consistently, the last few years, talked about the idea of sustainable budgeting here. And I looked at the schools because I realized the schools are the major driver of our budget. But nonetheless, what we can do on the town side of this, on the Town Hall side, I just think it would be irresponsible right now to add FTE when we're in this very precarious financial situation. We don't know what the future's going to hold. We don't know what this fiscal year is going to hold for us. And I have real concerns about the idea of this kind of spend. Anyone who just got their tax bills in the mail probably saw that they increased, and that we're not able to keep taking the high school into account. These FTEs are not one-offs. These are, you know, recurring expenses that we have that are going to be budgeted and going forward. And then with increases, obviously, it's going to become a more expensive proposition. So I would like to see how we could perhaps look at reallocating some responsibility within our current talent pool of employees, if that's possible. I know we have the senior work-off program. Is there a way that some of that work could be done in even another department that would free up some bandwidth for someone else? I don't know. I'm not going to pretend to know or try to micromanage. But I think also the point of succession planning, I think we should be mindful of the fact that if we are looking at a point where there will be transitions in the coming, you know, couple of years, I do want to give that person a little bit of agency to also be able to determine how he or she wants to structure things going forward on the Town Hall side. And I think that that's an important thing for us to think about. So, for a number of reasons, I don't think the timing of this is good, and I don't feel comfortable with that kind of a spend, because it is a commitment that we're making in the longer term with at least short-term uncertainty that could become a longer-term in nature. So that's the reason I'm not in support of it. I think in an ideal world, had we had a better financial outlook and better financial position, that it would be a different discussion. But I think that this is one of those where the circumstances warrant the decision-making, and I don't think we have a lot of flexibility if we're going to be financially responsible.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair. I respect Counselor Darmoski's position. I do have a different position. I'm going to call you Amy because I don't want to mispronounce your last name. I do appreciate you taking an hour and a half to meet with me a week and a half ago. When I looked at this, I went back to my days as an inspector general in the Navy. And when I went to commands to inspect them around the world, I looked at the mission requirements, and I looked that they have the adequate manning levels to accomplish the mission. What I walked away significantly on an efficiency standpoint with your department is your department is very dependent upon fact gathering to do a lot of your functions, whether it's unemployment, workman's compensation, inspections, et cetera. You and your staff are spending an inordinate amount of time doing the clerical work of gathering the pertinent and relevant facts that you need as the director in order to analyze and evaluate those facts and make either a recommendation or make a decision. And that's why I found from an efficiency standpoint, the taxpayers are paying the director of the HR department to do a lot of necessary clerical fact gathering work in order to accomplish your mission. And that's why, after looking at all the documentation that you've provided me, and after spending a lot of time chatting with you, and then chatting with the town administrator, I'm fully in support of the position.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. McLean?
The last time you were here, I heard a couple of things. I heard that the greeters were providing some services. I heard, I think, more from the town administrator relative to succession planning. I think you've indicated to me in an email that it's not so much succession planning where you are. I'm somewhat wondering whether, you know, the 65,000-odd position plus benefits could actually be fulfilled. I know you referenced in your memo a 2017 shared services person that was eliminated. I don't know that retirees could do all this, but I wonder whether that may be a different avenue, where you were talking about Corey checks and things of that nature. And again, I'm not micromanaging anybody's department, so I would just say that a couple of years ago, we were getting some dire fiscal predictions, and I was kind of the bright voice in the crowd. I think it was when we were thinking of the director of Strategic Planning and Development, if I got that correct. And now I'm kind of more where Counselor Darmoski is, because we've received a lot of money, and we have very good reserves this minute. You know, we received money, I believe, from the town administrator from National Grid, you know, earlier than we might have suspected. We received money from the project at the head of the lake. However, on the horizon is another $2.5 million bond for roadwork yet to be, but probably coming soon. Millions in fire equipment, coming soon, coming to a show near you soon. Loss of one-half of some of the grants we thought we had in the bag. Town administrators indicated, you know, yes, we were losing due to grants expiring, ARPA, no longer funding budgets. Yes, they will be built in in the future once we, you know, we take over those costs. So, but still, it makes me a little hesitant to go along with funding new positions, new FTEs right now. So that's my concern at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Counselor Dennehy?
Thank you. And my comments are not reflected at all in terms of your office and the quality of the work that your office does. I mean, I remember you coming last time and talking about how you consult with people about health insurance decisions, and I thought, what a great, what a great opportunity that is for employees to have somebody to help guide them. So I really appreciate that, and I appreciate all the work that you do and your office does. I am a little bit worried about where we are financially and the outlook and what the state outlook is, you know, with our hiring freeze, with, you know, the memo that we received from the town administrator that doesn't make things seem really promising for the future. And I have to say, I think it seems more pessimistic than even... And I have to say, I think it seems more pessimistic than even, and because we're dealing with some more exact data that shows that it is going to be worse than last year. And last year, I know that it was a major concern about hiring a new FTE because it was just an unknown where we'd be. And so I take that in. We also didn't vote to put the conservation agent to full-time because of those issues as well. So I'm just a little bit hesitant of supporting this, but I do see the need, so I'm very torn, I'm very conflicted on it, because I definitely see the need. But I'm wondering is that, could it be a part-time person? Could we start part-time and then maybe grow it into a full-time position?
I hesitated with that only because I think the greatest benefit that the greeter provided us was screening. You know, we have people stop by all the time, so to be in a strategic planning session, you know, Karen and I do different functions. She sits with all of the employees one-on-one and designs benefit plans with them. I do the HR functions, so I'm consulting with all of the department heads on department issues, and it's, it is time-consuming, those communications, and the interruptions make it longer. I feel like our days from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM are reactive rather than proactive. That's the majority of the day. So we're not really focusing on things that are proactive at this time. And just one other thing I'd like to mention about adding this position, two of the biggest functions where I think we have terrible leakage is workers' comp and unemployment, and I really honestly think that the savings we can achieve in both of those areas will pay for this.
Can you tell me how?
So, we have a vendor who manages, we have a third-party administrator that manages each of these, unemployment, workers' compensation, and even in so much as our staff and leaders are not really familiar with how that works. And so when you hire somebody on for a couple of months and then you let them go, that you're continuing to pay them. So there's an educational piece on that. I think we need to put in some best practices for how we handle hiring. A lot of times, it is, it's, it can be improved significantly with the workers' comp in particular. So our cases last far too long for something very simple. It seems like it's really hard to get people back to work, and Joe Conway and I have done a tremendous amount of meeting and research and sharing ideas of how we might curb that and some processes we could put in place to reduce that timeframe. Workers' comp is tough. I say it, it's like, it's like being a landlord. You have no rights, the tenant has all the rights. So it's really difficult, and you have to be meticulous with the details in order to follow up on the cases. We have many cases all the time. People are bringing in bills to us, or if we could just get that off of our plate and focus on implementing some safety procedures and some better procedures and policies for what happens while you're out on comp, and what the check-ins look like, and what the requirements for paperwork, we just, we don't have any of that. So those are the things I'd like to, policy that I'd like to put in place in order to curb the spending there.
And that makes sense, that makes sense. I have just a question for our town administrator. So I know that you're always, you know, you haven't been, this is the first position recently that you've been supportive of?
One of the few, yeah.
One of the few? And I know, strong fiscal management, which is good, but can you tell me why this position is something that you see as a need in light of kind of the doom and gloom that we've been hearing about and that you've been articulating?
I don't think I've been completely doomed, but a little bit.
Well, not completely, well, a little bit.
I think that, I think what the department is saying, what Amy is saying is completely right. They need to spend more time in these functions, and are spending more time doing clerical issues, clerical functions rather than management-type functions. If we can reach a couple more people on health insurance, we're going to make almost this money back. If we can get rid of one workers' comp case, and that's managing the insurer, who they seem to be very slow in getting people, working with us, getting people back to work, because maybe I'm paying overtime for somebody else, we're still paying this person, so we are paying money. Unemployment is a whole other issue where we need to challenge those. And as I've told this board before, they're still sending us bills for, what is it, $240,000? $242,000?
It's almost $300,000.
$300,000 for COVID-era payments that the state made that they shouldn't, and they've told us, well, you know, pay us, and then when we get the money, we'll send it back to you. Well, I won't do that, they'll take me away before I'll do that. And actually, we had a little discussion about ARPA. Some of my fellow managers used the ARPA funds early on and just paid it to get it off their desk, said, we'll never see that again. So these are the things that we will make money on. And there's also, you know, we need to move forward. We have, how many employees are we working with?
There are probably 1,300 on any given payroll.
1,300 people on any given payroll, and we have, you know, two people doing it, managing payroll for the entire other departments, things coming in. We had a turnover in the school department a couple of years ago, and I will tell you that my, and they send their payroll to us to manage, and I'll tell you that my HR department was there late on Fridays, trying to balance payroll because it was coming over unfortunately incorrect. There's nothing worse than not paying anybody, and they can't go out till the balances, and there are all sort of other financial implications, we filed the 941s and things like that with the state and federal government that have to be right. So, you know, for all those reasons, we need to grow this department to take care of other things. And in a $107 million budget, it's 65,000 plus benefits probably.
Yeah, now I understand where you're coming from, though, because the position will pay for itself.
Yeah, I think so.
Because that's the idea, is that it's not really...
My feeling is that it will.
Yeah, yeah. So that helps me to understand your position better.
Yeah, you know me.
I know you. I'm just curious.
Do you know how many times he's told me no?
Yeah. I understand that, so it actually will be, allow more opportunity to gain money back.
And I do think the whole conversion into that upper, advanced level of Munis, we're using it now in some of the contract negotiations as we go forward, and it does let Amy show me how we can project it much easier instead of the Excel and what have you. So it is, it is a great tool, and it's made, actually sharing with the unions and showing them has been helpful during the process.
Thank you, thank you both, thank you.
Any other comments from anyone who hasn't spoken yet? I just want to add, I think there's been a lot of good discussion on this, and I think the concern about both the budget impact as well as, I want to say sort of the risk impact of kind of, you know, running too lean in HR has been, you know, covered pretty well. You know, my perspective, though, is if we do move ahead with this position, I think it does come with the expectations, which is that we do get to all of the strategic things that you've been talking about, Amy. You know, I think that, you know, we can do more around, obviously, some of these sort of financial impacts that Mr. Mayo just talked about. But, you know, there's also more that we probably could be doing around employee relations, around CAVIR development for staff, and all of those other sort of traditional HR functions that are really easy to lose sight of when, you know, you're just kind of drowning in payroll and benefits and, you know, all of the administrative work that comes with the department. And so if we do move ahead with this, speaking just for myself, I hope that's an area where we do have some time to invest in. You know, thinking about a comprehensive training strategy for town staff. You know, we've made some good moves in there over the last couple of years, but how do we kind of pull it together into something that has some intentionality behind it? Those would be the areas that I hope we'd have some bandwidth to focus on.
I'd be happy to chat, we have lots of plans.
Yeah, great. Any other comments? I know Counselor Dombrowski, you had your hand up.
I just wanted to clarify it, Mr. Mayo, but the school department does have its own staff relative to this.
They have their own staff that does send the information over to our, our HR department, but that's where payroll is all uploaded, and it's got to balance, and that's when it goes out.
Right.
And we contact the bank.
They have a payroll coordinator who keys all of their payroll.
And each department does that, too, they send their department up.
So they're keying time sheets.
We do the processing on the town side, but they, the coordinator handles it all on the school side.
No, they key, so we own the only payroll system that actually cuts checks.
Right.
So everybody with all their various software programs has to get their information into Munis. And we have seven different payroll centers that we work with, with different payroll coordinators who are all using different systems that get their data into our biweekly payroll. And then, once all of the data is in, it's our function that we execute. So we're making all the journal entries, we are assigning all the check numbers, uploading all the money to the bank, and issuing the actual millions of dollars of funds each biweekly pay. Does that make sense?
I mean, I think we should be looking at, owning a business and running payroll, obviously on a smaller scale, but nonetheless, I think we should be looking at, okay, are there better efficiencies to be realized in some ways than if that's somehow become a bottleneck? Because it, there shouldn't have to be that. I know we just approved, what, $200,000, I think it was, for that new timekeeping system, I think it was DPW, right, in capital? So I thought that was supposed to have helped with the efficiencies.
That is going to have a significant impact, and Joe and I have been working on that together.
Right.
Right now, the system that he has, that also some portions of the school use, they're being discontinued or purchased, the software won't exist anymore. So what I've been trying to do is ask people to look at the Munis products, because everything has to coordinate with Munis. There are so many departments that have their own. So the light department has their own payroll software, they're not willing to look at Munis. The fire department has their own payroll software, they are willing to look at Munis. DPW will look at Munis, they have their own. Police has their own, they are not willing to look at it. And school has a little bit of half-and-half. Library is on Munis. So we're looking, we've been slowly kind of trying to get everybody into the Munis arena, and it's happening with some people more willingly than others.
But I guess that's my point, you know, it shouldn't be this kind of like hodgepodge of, oh, we want to do it, we don't want to.
Shouldn't be.
It should just be like, this is what we're going to do. I mean, we're one town.
I tried that.
And I'm not faulting you, but I'm just saying, like, but I don't want, you know, we talk so much about this siloing, and that's, this is the perfect example of the kind of siloing that we can absolutely avoid and streamline processes. And so I'd be more interested in, Mr. Mayo, and looking at what that kind of investment is looking like.
I think even if we did that, we would still need the extra person. I mean, there's a lot to do.
Well, it sounds like you, what I'm hearing, though, is there's a need for some additional functionality, so another set of hands. I'm not convinced that that means that it's an FTE with benefits. Again, I'm saying, do we need to look at reassigning responsibilities of current staff? Can senior, you know, work-off, can they fill some of the other staff, you know, responsibilities that are more basic, if you will, to enable the higher, you know, higher-tier responsibilities? Maybe that, I think that we have to look at, I think you as our CEO, basically, you know, that would be something important to look at, but it doesn't change the fact that just because there are inefficiencies now, we shouldn't try to work around the fact that a department doesn't want to do a particular thing that they should be doing. The department needs to be doing the thing if it's what's best for the town. And I'd like to see, once we get that into place, once we get, once we're like, we've maximized, optimized efficiency, then let's see where we're at. And if we still have that need, then we can have that discussion and hopefully be in a better financial position than what's we're facing and what's forecasted.
Thank you. Just a question on that. Can you speak, Ms. Forziati, just to, like, what is the effort involved in converting, say, you know, the police department to Munis for payroll? I mean, I imagine that's not a zero-effort project.
Well, on a biweekly basis, they have to perform some sort of function to get their data into Munis, which we are not involved with. But that also creates an issue where their accruals are not in Munis. I perform all of the audits and reporting for state, federal, whatever have you, and I don't have access to all of the data. So it's like that with police, and it's like that with light.
Yep.
With fire, their accruals are in their system. She rekeys everything from one system into another system.
Yeah, no, I get that. I guess maybe, just to clarify my question, if we were to convert a department to Munis, I mean, I'm assuming that that is some amount of time and effort on your part to actually affect, you know, it's not just, you know, we're moving from the software package to another. There are, you know, communications portals between the two software packages that would need to be retied, there's policy and procedure work that we need to do. Point being that there is, there's a project that's involved in doing some of these efficiencies, which I think Counselor Dombrowski is rightly pointing out are the right place to go, but I just want to highlight that that's not a project that happens without effort and time on the part of your team, I would imagine.
That's right. So you'll see in the detailed memo I sent, you know, we spent one entire year implementing employee ESS, which is just an online portal where they can go and enter their time sheets or look at their accruals, change their address, things of that nature. But regardless of whether or not we hire somebody to implement these things, it still requires us 50/50 with the person because we have certain needs for how it needs to be set up. So, you know, we do a lot of this by ourselves. We have one Munis IT staff member who's really good and super helpful, but also spread really thin. So sometimes it's, it is just easier, I mean, and, you know, the payroll pieces coming in are just a smaller part of, I think it's the domino effect beyond that that creates an issue.
So I would add just sort of a, one wish list to my comments earlier, which is that if we do move ahead to approve this position, I hope that this is the type of work that we have the bandwidth to start to move ahead with, because it is the right work over time. I think that's clear, you know, but we have to make sure we're resourcing the work if we're going to do it. And Counselor McLean?
Questioning the town administrator, are we, for workers' comp, we are not self-insured or we are self-insured?
No, we have a company.
Right, so from a prior life.
Right.
I had partners who worked workers' comp, I never wanted to go near it.
Yeah.
But...
Wise choice.
Yeah, wise choice.
Basically, the insurer's in control, and the insurance doctor is doing the maybe independent medical examination, and the plaintiffs are fighting back, and all that process takes a great amount of time. So with all due respect to you, I don't really see how that process could be sped up when it's out of our control.
Well, I think what it, what it, you need to keep constant vigilance on the insurer, moving them forward, getting this done quicker. I mean, we want our people back if we can. Things get delayed on their part, it goes weeks and things that we don't get information back. So, you know, we've actually kind of talked about whether we're happy with that arrangement right now. But that's, you know, by us stepping in, or by Amy's department stepping in, moves that along, it moves it along.
Point being that I don't know whether it would if the insurer's in control. That's the only point.
The insurer is in control of the processing the claims, but we're in control of the employees. So when the employee is out, they need to communicate with us about how they'd like to be paid biweekly, whether it's, you know, which accruals they want to use. They communicate with us when they bring in a doctor's note, or they don't communicate with us, and then we have to reach out and say, you know, where are you at? Do you have a new doctor's note? It's constant...
Oh, I certainly understand the processing aspect. I was just getting to the prior conversation that Counselor Dennehy brought up relative to, you know, it paying for itself, the job paying for itself.
You can sometimes get them back quicker, it helps.
In a perfect world.
Yeah, in a perfect world.
All right. Any further questions that we haven't covered? All right, seeing none, I will take a motion to approve the group health insurance, human resources, Budget Number 46 is presented.
Yes, I'm on.
Seconded.
Further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five to two. Thank you, Ms. Forziati, appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Two weeks ago and tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything you do.
No, thank you for having me.
No problem. Let's move on to Budget Number 26, Health and Human Services Department. I know we have our health director and some representation from our Board of Health, so come on up to the table, and Mr. Gill, I'll let you present this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Health and Human Services budget, we're requesting an increase of $117,000 to $170 over the current fiscal year. This increase breaks down under Personal Services. The increase is $114,220, which includes contractual and negotiated increases. It also includes a part-time preventive and wellness cohort data that was previously caged for out of a grant. Also, in fiscal '25, there'll be no... Also, in fiscal '25, there'll be no ARPA offset, where we did offset this salary budget by an ARPA offset last year. Last year, we used $50,000 from ARPA. We're not using it in fiscal '25. Also, last year, we used the $100,000 from opioid settlement fund to offset salaries. We'll be doing the same thing for fiscal '25, using the same, another $100,000 from the opioid settlement. Under Contractual Services, the increase is $3,650. This increase is in the professional services line item. This increase is for the intermunicipal agreement between Melrose Wakefield and Stonem for the cost-sharing services of the director, a part-time health nurse, and a senior health inspector. The total budget request, tax levy request for fiscal '25 is $507,762. I will point out that we do bring in some revenue from the health department in the vicinity of about $50,000 a year.
Thank you, Kevin. And just to clarify, Kevin, the amount coming off of grant funding either through ARPA or through the part-time position is about $9900,000 or so, is that correct?
About, just under $100,000. So, it was $50,000 for ARPA and the grant funding for that part-time position, it's in the budget for fiscal '25 at $48,661.
Okay.
So, those two added together is approximately the $100,000 increase for that budget for those two items.
Okay.
Total.
Thank you. Good morning, or good evening, good morning. It's a little long day already. Mr. Shoy and Ms. Silva, any comments you'd like to add?
Yeah, so I want to say thank you. Thank you, Kevin, and thank you to the Wakefield Town Council for allowing us here tonight. I wanted to go over a couple of highlights this year from the investment that the Wakefield Town Council has made in the Health and Human Services Department. We're very proud to excel in the three areas, the three main areas of coverage. Our public health nursing, on top of their routine flu vaccines, they were able to provide just over 1,300 flu vaccines this year, over 31 flu clinics. That includes public clinics as well as drop-in visits. They work diligently to cover our camps. They work alongside all of our Boys and Girls Club camps and our boating camps and all of our other great activities. They help with compliance with state regulations. They also help with screening for immunizations with our camps. They also provide educational materials throughout the year, so they work very closely with our senior center and our libraries to provide those opportunities for learning about different health areas, one of which this year was increase in tick-borne diseases. As our weather stays warmer throughout the year, we don't have that, we don't have that big cold freeze to kill off ticks, so we've been seeing an increase in tick-borne diseases. And so, that information is very important to get out to our community. This year especially, we've been very, we've been very happy to have extra help this year dealing with an emergency sheltering response. We had a situation with 10 migrant families coming to the town of Wakefield for the duration of one and a half weeks. Our nurses, working with our social services coordinator and myself, were able to assess healthcare needs for these families, deliver food, provide necessities, and support with the help of a Haitian Creole interpreter. We also got a lot of support from our Wakefield Food Pantry, Melrose Wakefield Hospital, and many of our other community partners, and Melrose and Stonem as well. This was a great effort, and these families were in a dire spot, and so we were able to provide that support for them. Moving on to our communicable disease, they've also been able to follow up with those cases as well, providing support to our community members. Moving on to environmental health, our inspectors have been able to keep up with our, with our food permits as well as our housing cases. The town of Wakefield now has, is at an all-time high with 125 food permits for establishments. That ranges from restaurants, nursing homes, and supermarkets, all the way down to convenience stores. Across all standard food permits, our farmers market, our temporary events, and our food establishment plan reviews for our new businesses coming to town, we had issued 227 permits this year. And so, keeping up with all of these businesses, providing best practices, and working with our food establishments is a very high priority for us to make sure that safety is achieved. In our housing and environmental health, we had just over 155 complaints this year, with housing complaints comprising roughly 40% of those. When there is a complaint that's filed with our department, our inspectors are able to go out. A lot of the time, they have to work with the landlord and tenant to make sure that we're able to achieve compliance with the state housing code. Though these are sometimes very time-consuming processes, this is important for us to help with the residents and their situation. We're also, we're also proud to say that we have completed the 10-year Drug-Free Communities Grant. As of September 2023, that grant has sunset. That grant provided $125,000 per year over the last 10 years. A great, a great product that's come from it is the Wake Up Coalition. They've continued to do great work in the substance use prevention field. They've also been able to advocate with the schools and other town partners to make sure that that information is widely available. They continue to do great work with our youth and promoting great mental health and behavioral health programs as well. Some of our other ongoing grants are school violence grants. The Stop School Violence Grant is a shared grant between Melrose Wakefield and Stonem. That is $1 million over three years. We are entering year two of that grant. We have been able to work with our schools, provide adjustment counselors, as well as other restorative practice trainings, an important part of our activities. And we also partner with the other three communities in the Melrose Wakefield Tufts Healthcare Grant at $13,000 a year. This grant focuses on providing social services and spreading awareness of existing resources. We also participate in a six-community grant, the Public Health Excellence Grant, in which we are entering year four. That is between Melrose Wakefield, Stonem, Malden, Medford, and Winchester. Though Melrose is the fiscal agent, we have received, we are now receiving $561,000 every year to work with these six communities to increase our capacity for environmental health and health equity work. And just to round that portion out, our social services coordinator, social service manager and social services coordination branch has been very, very efficient. They've been able to serve over 150 households. This position provides access points for individuals and families to employment services, food security, immigration support, winter clothing, transportation, mass health, senior services, and rental assistance, among others. So, this position is able to help connect our residents to existing resources and help them streamline their application processes. And finally, there's much to be proud of from the Board of Health side. Melrose Wakefield and Stonem, Stonem joined us in January, on January 1st of 2023. We were named for the Kenneth E. Pickard MMA Innovation Award this year for regionalization. This is something that we've talked about for a long time. The Department of Public Health has talked about the importance of regionalization of health resources. Towns may have lots of resources to provide health services, but when, when working together, it is much stronger for our region. So, we're very proud to be part of that, part of that effort, and we still continue to receive a lot of benefits from working with Melrose and Stonem on many shared issues. I also want to congratulate the Board of Health. Wakefield Board of Health became only the second board of health in the state to adopt nicotine-free generation and a very important tobacco prevention policy that we've been working on for many months now, Brookline being the first community to adopt this. But essentially, nicotine-free generation is the first policy of its kind that will eventually bring us to potentially a tobacco-free environment. We've worked on many policies in the past. Elaine has been around for many of them. The flavor ban, pharmacy ban, work, smoke-free workplace, these are all very important policies, and the education and outreach that we've done up to this point is all necessary for us to be at this step. But nicotine-free generation has a policy which bans tobacco sales to individuals born after January 1st, 2004. This policy is really important in our efforts to stop tobacco use. Most important statistic being the smoking is still the number-one preventable cause of death in the United States. And so, the Wakefield Board of Health had great courage, listening to the presentations from both sides, but able to move, move forward with this important policy. And I would also be remiss to not mention that Laurel Goreville is our Chair of the Board of Health. She is finishing her 15th year on the Board of Health. She will not, she will not be returning, but we very much appreciate all of the work she's put in in the last 15 years. Her insight and her thoughtfulness in all these policies has not gone unnoticed. COVID only being the latest struggle to deal with for the Board of Health, but we really do appreciate all the work that Laurel's put in.
Thank you. Ms. Silva, any questions you'd want to add?
Any questions?
Or comments you'd want to add, sorry.
I think that being, and many of you know, I have sat in Anthony's seat not once, but twice. And being a director, I am still involved in public health, belong to the Mass Association of Public Health Nurses, and I presently teach senior nursing students in public health. I'm very, very proud of the fact that my community has and is going the way that the DPH, Department of Public Health, wants us to go with regionalization. I'll let you know that we are admired across the state. Last year, Anthony spoke at our Public Health Nurses Conference, and he talked about the regionalization. Everyone was very impressed. I told him he was not available, he was ours, and that was it. They could not take him. And I think that the work that we've done is, you look at it and you say, oh my goodness, how did they do this? It's a lot of hard work. I think that Anthony and the whole Health Department, and I think that the council and everyone has been very supportive. And I hope that you continue to give us this support. We're making waves, we're making, we're doing what we call public health is prevention. I think everything we are doing is heading towards good prevention, and I think that this community is, health-wise, is going to be a lot better in the next 10 years. I hope so. We finished Healthy People 2020, and now we're working for 2030. And I said to somebody the other day, I can't wait to start on 2020 because I intend to be here and be part of it. And I think, I think we have to thank Anthony and the whole Health Department. He has a phenomenal, phenomenal staff, let me tell you. They are, my nursing students have had the opportunity, a couple of them, to be here and do one-day rotation here, and they have just gone back and just talked about it and are still talking about it, and are now considering careers in public health. And that's something to put, to say about. And I think it's because of the example that they saw here.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much. We're actually going to take a little bit of a pause in this agenda item because we do have a public hearing scheduled at 7:03. So, if I could ask both of you to sit back for just a couple of minutes while we handle that. And I will take a motion from the council to open the public hearing for a liquor license for Zagsun LLC, DBA Boss Mama.
Please move.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote to open the public hearing. Council Vincent?
Yes.
Council Daney?
Yes.
Council McAlvin?
Yes.
Council McLean?
Aye.
Council Butt?
Yes.
Council Dabrowski?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Well, welcome. Thank you for bearing with us for a moment or so past 7:03.
Thank you for having us.
But please, when you get settled, please introduce yourselves and go ahead with your presentation.
Good evening, all. My name is Robert Bell. I'm Wendy's lawyer from the Melrose firm of Bell &amp; Izzy. And with me tonight is Wendy Galini, who is, she is Zagsun. And I think Wendy can tell you her story better than I can, but she has a life of experience in the restaurant and beverage business, and is highly qualified, and, you know, has a sterling long-term record. Wendy, go ahead.
Thank you, Bob. I appreciate that. Good evening. My name is Wendy Galini. I am a lifelong resident of Melrose, right next door. Grew up on 45 Fenton Street, born at the Melrose Wakefield Hospital. Mr. Bell is correct. I got into the restaurant industry probably, I think, my first job was at the Fickle Flounder in Saugus. Probably dating myself a little bit down the street. Did that, carried around, married a chef. I have owned and operated restaurants, started with my first one in Melrose, very small mom and pop. We grew to a full-service restaurant, Polly's. I'm not sure if anybody remembers that one as well, where Mexico Lindo is now. We were an anchor of the community in downtown, which we appreciated. We also had a breakfast restaurant as well. So, from pretty much about a 15-year span, we did that. While I was in the, in the business in the city of Melrose, I'm also a very community activist. I served on the Chamber of Commerce, Melrose Alliance Against Violence. I was one of the founding member, but pretty much the first one that they brought on after they founded. I'm a special education advocate, which brought me to be a two-term school committee member in the, in policy chair. I also co-founded a Foundation for Autism. We raised money specifically for children with needs and such like that. I find that in the restaurant industry, you become not an anchor, just an anchor of the community, where people love to go to enjoy their experiences. You also have a civic responsibility to, to connect in the ways that you can and facilitate that. I've been out in the corporate world for about 15 years, being a training manager for many large corporations, from Legal Seafood to One Ten Grill, Rebel Restaurants and such. And my sons that were younger when I sold my last restaurant are now older, and as much as I gave them a broad stroke to do whatever they wanted to do in life, they ended up enjoying the restaurant industry. And is asked for us to come together to find a place. So, we were looking, and I couldn't be more happy with the spot that we found for my rate of reasons. So, hopefully that'll give you a little bit of a touch on that.
Can you speak just briefly about the restaurant concept?
Sure. So, Zagsun is the corporation that we put, it's the initials of my children and grandchildren, which works out. So, Boss Mama, it has been my work handle for many, many years. I'd like to hope it's, it was a term of endearment, but it's a little bit about my work stuff. One of the things that I did learn, as we all know, as COVID kind of turned the world sideways, the restaurant and hospitality industry were one of the most affected things. I learned an awful lot, and now to how we had to pivot and move, and how the future changes, and how people have started to change, and how they do things. So, this is a, what I would call a love letter to my children, because we wanted to make something that was going to be sustainable in the future, interactive, fun, and still keep the level of hospitality. So, with Boss Mama, we're going to convert that into, is we calling it a tap room and kitchen. And what we're doing is, we are going to extend the tap, the taps in the restaurant to give people more opportunity for, you know, more casual things and a lot of the nice microbrewery. So, imagine being at a brewery, but not being confined to the, just the particular things they're having there. We're going to have an awful, you know, 24 taps and opportunity to try different things. To, to complement that, the menu is IT's and designed that it will have power bowls and healthy items and such, but a lot of man versus food kind of food, the things that I found myself cooking for people later in the evening. So, you know, we're doing that. We're also, this is, I try to say like, if you think about Rising Eagle in Melrose, kind of that town feel you get to come in, this will do that, but have a little bit more of a modern twist in being the fact that you will see digital walls, things where people can look up and see menus and do things, and really be in control of their dining experience, where we will be a presence on the floor, doing our things, but a little bit more interactive, allowing people to interact in their ordering and their timing and, and coming up and choosing digitally. Maybe they wanted to try one of the craft beers, education, things like this. We are going for a full liquor license. There is still a bar built into that area. However, at this time, our focus is, we won't be free pouring alcohol. The reason being is, being a trainer for many, many years, responsible alcohol service is a very important factor in not only protecting people's well-being, but, you know, your place in doing business. So, for this reason, we want to have the sense of controls with that. So, we'll be doing canned seltzers, ready-to-drink, things like that, everything. So, the best way I can describe it is, if you were going to get a martini somewhere, maybe that's three and a half ounces of alcohol. Well, what if the bartender, a six-second count is one and a half, two more seconds, you have two ounces, two more seconds, you have two and a half, three. So, when you're trying to have responsible alcohol service, and we're trying to make sure, oh, they've had a couple of cocktails, have they had two or three, depending on the pour? We're minimizing this with the interactive pieces, where we can monitor digitally what you're getting and having, but still allow the hospitality and the fun piece. That's where our focus is. We think about people like to kind of order online now. So, we'll have digital pictures. We tend to find that the restaurant industry has changed, and for us to thrive, we have to change with them. So, we consider ourselves, we're going to be kind of almost like the birth of what you're going to start seeing more trends to doing in the restaurant industry, without losing that hospitality feel. So, it's a little bit of fun.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the Council? Counsel Dobrowski?
I just want to confirm, so Mr. Mayo, this would just be, it's a license transfer. It's like, we're not, it doesn't, it doesn't eat into our, into our license.
No, no. It counts. The one that counts is, is no longer, the other one counts now.
Right. Okay.
Counsel Butt?
We're good in that area.
So I just, I want to thank you for sharing your story and kind of your history.
Papa wasn't too much. No, Bob knows I can talk underwater.
I think, you know, we're so close to the border, and I think as the counselor that lives the closest to where you are opening up, I'm right across the street. I'm really excited for you to come over the line from Melrose and join us in Wakefield. So thank you.
Well, we appreciate that. Obviously, growing up in the communities, we're very similar, except for Thanksgiving morning, I'd have to say. And I have to thank you back because I am an experienced operator in many ways, and it's not my first time going into, into things. But you still have many questions, and I have to say this with the most sincerity. The openness, as I've been going to the Town Hall, Ms. Dalton, my, I, you know, hi, sick of my emails all the time, you know, always trying to stay in front of things and you're juggling a lot of balls, you know, warm welcome, everybody from every single office that I've been into, and I want to thank you. And that's one of the really important things is when you're building a community and, and you want to keep growing, is the accessibility. I, it was, it's admirable, and I, I thank you because it has been a great experience as I'm showing my sons the other end of this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Counsel McLean?
Do you have a good amount of square footage at your new location?
Do I have a good amount of?
How much square footage?
So it's 3,900 square foot. It has the beautiful doors that go out to that patio, which I love. It has the nice element of the fireplace in there. Not a lot of windows in the back, so rather than fight that, we're embracing that with televisions, with digital, with kind of fun stuff. So we're going to brighten it up in another way, but also warm it up. The work that we're doing is changing out equipment. They obviously have customized equipment for the concept that's there now that we'll be changing, upgrading things, bringing things up to, you know, the style, and I think it's going to be a nice fit.
Will you have some outside as well seating?
There is. So there's a patio that's already established there, a small one that's gated, lovely little piece in there, in the Greenwood Plaza.
I very much like what you say about controlling the alcohol consumption, being careful in that regard, because as you say, you know.
The biggest thing is knowledge is power, and training is one of the most important things we can do. I will let you know, our intention, we hire everybody over 18, everybody TIPS certified because you're, every, it's a learning piece, and it doesn't just stop on, okay, we have it now, and we don't do it. I'm all about development, having the vendors come in constantly, you know, educating everybody so they learn, and it empowers them to do the responsible thing, again, while, while we're making sure that everybody has the best guest experience possible.
And don't get me wrong, I like my IPAs, but, you know, you can always have another one when you get home.
Little sip of sunshine, cloud candy, where we go with this.
Both. I'll be there.
Thank you. We look forward to seeing you.
Thank you. Counsel Danahy?
Yes. I just want to say, welcome to Wakefield. I live on the Melrose line, so, and I think that we have another counselor who's in Greenwood as well, so I'm really looking forward to having you in town, and I agree with Counselor Butt that it was really interesting to hear your story and looking really forward to seeing you as a community partner.
Well, I appreciate that, and I do feel like Melrose and Wakefield is almost like the marriage of two families.
Right.
Coming in, so, you'll be giving away the bribe.
Do we have any public comment before we take a motion?
We do not.
All right. In that case, I will accept a motion to approve a liquor license for Zaxxon LLC, DBA Boss Mama.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Further discussion? Seeing none, I believe we have to take a roll call vote for this as well?
I would, honestly.
Okay. Counsel Vincent?
Yes.
Counsel Danahy?
Yes.
Counsel Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counsel McLean?
Aye.
Counsel Butt?
Yes.
Counsel Dobrowski?
A very enthusiastic guest.
And myself, yes, as well. Motion carries seven zero with our, our congratulations and good luck, and I think you'll, you'll find a receptive community here in Wakefield.
And I appreciate that, and I look forward to seeing all of you and doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Don't go away just yet. We'll do the other parts of your license in a moment. But first, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Counsel Vincent?
Yes.
Counsel Danahy?
Yes.
Counsel Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Counsel Butt?
Yes.
Counsel Dobrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes. So motion carries seven zero. The public hearing is now closed. While we have you here, let's move on very quickly to items 7A and B. 7A is the Common Victular License for Zaxxon LLC. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion on the Common Victular License? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And item 7B is an entertainment license for Zaxxon LLC. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Hold on a second.
All right. So moved by Counsel Butt, seconded by Counsel McLean. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. So you all are good to go. Thank you so much again. Good luck and look forward to seeing the place open.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice to see Attorney Val. She carried today, didn't really. Thank you.
All right. With that, Mr. Choi and Ms. Silva will bring you back up. And Sheri, do we have anyone from FinCom on for the Health and Human Services budget?
We do not.
All right. In that case, I will open it up to questions and comments from the Council. Counsel Dobrowski?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. It's very helpful. I know that when we were here last year and perhaps the year prior, we talked about the idea that some of the expansion of this department was intended to be able to get more boots on the ground from like an inspection standpoint, you know, especially for food, the food inspections, that sort of thing. What had, and I know you said that they have been ongoing, what has been the discernible, you know, increase or improvement that we've been able to see with initial resources?
Sure. So especially with the health inspection side, we used to follow a two inspections per establishment schedule. Since, since the increase with the extra 0.5 FTE from that budget, I think it was fiscal 23, I want to say, with the addition of the extra half FTE, we were able to move to the FDA Best Practice Risk-Based Schedule, which is the Risk 1 through 4 schedule. So that's one inspection for low-risk convenience storage, other ones up, all the way up to Risk 4, which is sushi, other higher-risk senior living facilities, those establishments and restaurants falling somewhere between 1, 2, 3, and 4 in terms of risk. And so we've been able to complete all of those inspections per year. So that's, the risk level corresponds to the number of inspections that are, that are required. And so we've been able to complete all of those and then some, so those, all of our routines are covered, and we're also able to complete all of our re-inspections as well.
And what has that yielded in terms of, I'll say violations or, or compliance for that matter?
Sure. Yeah. So I think the reason we do this is to both increase our presence in the restaurants, but also to increase compliance, and so we're able to go out there more often. That means we can see more. In general, if we're looking at health inspections as a whole, it's really a snapshot in time for food inspections. So we can't guarantee that in between inspections, everything's going perfectly, but the more kind of snapshots throughout the year that we can do, you know, the more sure that we can be that these restaurants are following the standards that we're putting forth. And so we've had a couple of situations with a couple of restaurants this year that may not have been going so well, but because we've had more opportunity to go out and work with these restaurants, I believe that they are in a better spot now than they were before.
And I'll just say, you know, while I certainly don't want to do, you know, restaurant shaming, I do think that there's a lot that goes underreported relative to, you know, certain inspections, the inspections that may not go as, as intended. So I would encourage the department to think about ways in which, you know, we can, we can still be a good community partner for our businesses, but also make sure that their health are up to the standard that is required of them. And I know, I know of a few businesses in particular that have not really passed the test, and I don't think that most people are aware. Again, I'm not trying to shame them, but they need to be in compliance. The other piece is, I'm a strong supporter of the regionalization approach you talked about. I'd love to see that every way we can. I think there's a number of benefits to that. And now that we have Stonem in the mix now since, what, '23?
Yes.
I'm curious to, to know how, obviously, regionalization gives, provides a number of benefits, but from my perspective, one of the, one of the great benefits is cost efficiencies. And I'm looking now at the loss of the $50,000 in ARPA, which I did not support because it was monies that were, it was a non-recurring source of, of revenue for a recurring expense. But I'm seeing that, and then I know we have the opioid $100,000, which will be eventually coming out of the mix as well, right? We have a time.
Many years, many years.
Yeah. And I know that the 10-year grant for the, was it tobacco-free?
Drug-free.
Drug, yeah, drug-free, that, that's no longer, that's $125 we're not getting after a decade of having gotten that. So what is the, the intention or approach for how we can realize better cost efficiencies? I don't know if you were here for the earlier discussion regarding just what I see as a precarious situation, both at the state level and also locally. You know, how, how are you guys trying to leverage that collaboration with now three communities to try to improve the value that the taxpayer is getting?
Absolutely. So kind of what we see as the senior leaderships, so myself, the senior inspector and the senior public health nurse, the three of us are now shared with the town of Stonem, and so our salaries are paid 30% now by the town of Wakefield instead of previously, which was 40%. And so we're, we're saving some costs there amongst the senior leadership group. We're also able to apply for other grants, and so one of the grants being the Public Health Excellence Grant. So that's the six-community grant that we've had for now four fiscal years, I believe. We've been, we've been told that we've been extended another three extra fiscal years now. It's a Department of Public Health grant. And so a lot of our kind of expansion in Wakefield, which will include more establishments of different types, including maybe Body Works and other, and other types of establishments that will require more capacity. And so this grant being an environmentally health-focused, environmental health-focused grant, we can leverage that in higher positions that will work as a region, so that will not just cover us, but the other five communities as well as in this grant. And so with the expansion of new businesses, the capacity, the need for more inspection capacity can be met by inspections, inspectors that'll be hired on that grant. And so that's part of how we're going to realize some of those savings moving forward.
And then just finally, you had mentioned the 10 migrant families. What sort of reimbursement are we getting either from the state or federal level for the expenditure of, of our municipal resources?
Sure.
Do you want me to jump in and take you?
Mr. Mayo was very well aware of our, of our situation.
We, on this most recent one, to be frank, Anthony did a great job, and the state frankly let us down, and we had to chase them to get reimbursed for, for the, not even our costs, but the cost of the establishment they weren't going to pay. It was a real tough road to go with them.
And did we end up getting reimbursed for?
They're paying the hotel directly, and we're requesting our other time, but sometime we're going to frankly, we're going to lose our time. Sometime we'll lose. And that's, that's a problem with the state right now. It's a serious problem, and we spoke to Lieutenant Coverall about it, not just us.
Well, I mean, it just really troubles me because ultimately, it's a federal issue that then the state is not reimbursing us on, and it's, this is a great example, and it's literally falling on our shoulders as a municipality of 27,000. And I'm concerned about, you know, if that's what's happening now, what are we looking at going forward relative to that?
So actually, something that was very promising was, we received a lot of in-kind donations. That's the Wakefield Food Pantry, that's the Melrose Wakefield Hospital. We also received a lot of help from the Boys and Girls Club, which is our partnership with Stonem as well, and Lola's Closet, which was also in Stonem. They were able to help out with, with a lot of the needs. So that's children's clothes, that's diapers, that's a lot of essential needs. And so a lot of it became more of a community effort, reaching out to a lot of our different partners. And so Wakefield has a lot of great resources and a lot of great partners, but I think because of the regionalization, we're able to also reach, have a further reach and talk to these organizations as well.
And I appreciate that, but it just ultimately ends up, you know, pulling from the community proper, in the sense that, we had the food bank that was here, we just gave them ARPA funds because they are in a precarious situation. The Boys and Girls Club, you know, we're regularly supporting in different ways, and so it, it still becomes a draw ultimately, right? And it's, and I don't think that that's a financial responsibility that we as a community should be faced with when it's, when it's an issue or crisis that's not of our making and candidly not of our, not of our control in any way.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Oh, Counsel Butt, sorry.
No worries. So thank you for that presentation and the highlights, and thank you for the Board of Health Committee members who just have done so great.
I think I will be the one that will miss Laurel the most.
I know.
Where I think, I think she has like six or seven months on me.
I would like to point out, you could still write her in on the election at the end of the, at the end of the month, just saying.
I told you, you never know. You never know.
Sorry.
That's okay. No, echoing everything, all the great work. We thank you. I do, I hope, I feel like as we're nearing the end of this budget cycle, something we've talked about a lot to the other departments, so whether it be Karen at the Senior Center, whether it be Catherine at the library, Dan, like, I'm hoping we hear from you in six months and hear more about coordination and some joint programming that you do. You know, your, your department does a great job. I think forever, one of our biggest achievements will be the social worker. I sent two people to him this weekend. People reached out and said they needed to talk to someone. I said, go to Jason, like, he'll, he'll send you in the right direction. But I, I do think, and, and there's some priorities that, you know, Town Administrator Mayo is setting about loneliness post-pandemic, senior work. And so I really, I really want to hear about some of those programs that you and your staff, like you and your team are doing with the other departments, and, and not wait till next budget season, if we can, you know, kind of add that to the calendar. Because I, I know everyone's focused on it, but I'd really like to hear about some of the coordinations that we do to address some of the, the human service stuff that we do in town.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Counsel Danahy?
So I just want to thank you for all of your hard work to the department as well as people who serve on the board. It's the work that your group does is really amazing, and it's, it makes me really proud to be part of a town that supports Health and Human Services so fully, and I feel really fortunate that the people who, who are on that board are incredibly talented and bring such great resources. And I do just want to give a big shout out to Laurel, is that Laurel is probably one of the most passionate people I know about public health, and she's somebody who has been doing this as a volunteer for 15 years. And I know that she has great insight, great passion, and she cares deeply about this town. And so I know that she's going to be missed. And I just want to give a shout out to, a special shout out to Laurel, and thank you all for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're very lucky to have the opportunity to pick up the phone and call three very, very qualified Board of Health members at any time when we need help. Elaine knows I've called her at late hours, but we're very lucky to have them in all of our situations. So their insight is greatly helpful.
It's a great team. It's a wonderful team, let me tell you. It's great to know that. I've talked to a lot of other public health people, and I look at them and I say to them, well, that doesn't happen where I come from. I can call that director, I can call that social worker, I can call that office, and they will turn around and they will find me the person to help this other person. And there's been many residents, you know, that we have helped. And I think it's a wonderful thing, and we should be very, very proud of it, very proud.
Absolutely. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'll just add, you know, my thoughts. I look at the total amount of this budget, you know, it's less than half a percent of the overall town budget. And when I think about the impact that we have on people's lives with the work that you do, you know, we see that in a very direct way with some of the social services work, which I totally agree with Councilor Butt, is a tremendous step forward for our community. But, you know, the drug prevention work that we've done over the years and the culture that that's built among our young people. The fact that, you know, not only by doing these inspections and actually stepping up to the USDA standard or the FDA standard, not only are we protecting the safety of our residents, but I really do truly think that we're actually helping our businesses thrive. Because at the end of the day, you know, if you want to be a successful restaurant in town or a successful store, you've got to be able to comply with these rules. And, you know, the advice that you give around compliance, I think, is really important. You touched upon some of the environmental health and the housing complaints. I mean, I will say I've kind of personally sent residents to the department over the last several months who've gotten a tremendous amount of help and help that we weren't able to provide before. So I really am proud of what we've been able to do in this area. And I thank, you know, the Board of Health, first of all, for your leadership, you know, Elaine and Laurel and Candace. You guys have done a tremendous job. And I know in many cases, you guys have actually stepped in and done the work around particularly public health nursing during COVID. And to Anthony, to you and your entire team, I really am proud of the results that we see from this department. So thank you for everything.
Thank you.
With that, I will take a motion to approve the Health and Human Services budget as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you so much, and thank you for bearing with us for a little pause in your presentation this evening. All right, moving on, item 5C, Budget Number 35 Vocational Schools, Mr. Gill.
Yes, the vocational school budget, the fiscal 25, we're recommending that this budget be increased 306,504 dollars, I'm sorry, 520 dollars. The changes are as follows. The Northeast Regional is increasing 332,040 dollars. For fiscal 25, we're estimating the same number of students as this year, 101 students. This increase has broken down 76,329 dollars for operations. And 255,711 dollars was an increase to their debt service costs when they're building a new school up there. Under the Minute Man or Essex North, there is no money asked for next year. That we don't anticipate any students going there in fiscal 25, the same as this year. The Essex Regional or Essex North, the current fiscal year that we're in now, we budgeted 10 students. Eleven ended up attending. Two of the students moved out of Wakefield, dropping us to nine. That happened in December. Two also will be graduating at the end of this year. That will bring us down to seven starting next year. And we're going to budget one extra student for next year. So we're going to budget eight versus the 10 that we have this year. So there is a little bit of savings here, 20,255 dollars. Also, the transportation costs because of the less students at Essex North, we're able to reduce that line item, 5,225 dollars. With this budget, we actually don't know the number of students that will be attending these schools until the first day of school. So it's probably not until September that we do actually get the final head council. A lot of these numbers are estimated. The Northeast Regional is pretty well set, but Minute Man or Essex North, if there are additional students, we'll have to do a supplemental appropriation or reserve fund transfer later in the fiscal year to cover those costs. The total budget request for fiscal 25 is 2,558,485 dollars.
I might point out, Mr. Chairman, that that number does include the debt service on the new vocational school that is actually was forecasted higher than it came in at for a number of reasons. Number one is the construction has been a little bit slower. The other part is that, like we did at Wakefield High School, vocational school also got some extra reimbursement from the state, which we're going to, everyone's going to partake in, including Wakefield. So that was a nice help too. So this is actually less than when we put our forecast together, the debt service was less, so that does help us a little bit.
And if I was following Mr. Gill, your presentation correctly, it sounds like the debt service is, you know, about, you know, 10 percentage points of the 13 or so change for the increase, okay.
255,000.
Thank you. Sheri, do we have anyone from FinCom on for this budget? My guess is no.
Yeah, we do not.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the council? Councilor McLean.
Just curious, Kevin or Town Administrator, I thought the debt service was more or less static, but we're saying 101 students, no change in the number of students, but it's going up 16.29%. Could you just explain why the increase? I thought we had kind of a
The debt service.
You just said we had a better deal on debt service.
Better than we had forecast for.
Okay.
Not that, not that the actual number. We had forecast more money for debt service this year than last year. This year then actually came in under the actual numbers.
So that's not a number, I remember a number of something like 900 grand. Is that a number that's going to change year by year?
On the debt service? Yeah, the debt service will go up higher as we go.
As they build, right.
As they build, yeah. It's kind of like with our own high school, you know, they're only really drawing down what they need, which is great.
Right.
So you don't get hit right away. I'm hoping they're playing the same rating game that we are, hoping the rates come down.
And we're built on a per-student basis.
And we're built on per-student during the time.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Councilor Dubrowski.
I'll just say that 16.29% obviously stood out, and again, it's explained by the 255. But that is going to be creeping up every year, so.
That will be creeping up, yeah.
Just so we're all mindful of just the financial realities we're facing, that number 255 is low, and it's going to keep going higher. I was disappointed, though, to see, and I understand that with the vocational school, it's a little bit of a, it's a capacity issue currently, but I was disappointed to see that our number's where they were in terms of student enrollment. And I don't know what else we can be doing as a community to try to encourage these other opportunities. Because part of the reason that we're doing the VOC is to expand enrollment, because there are so many kids who are trying to get into that school who can't right now. And I don't know what it is about Wakefield specifically that may have caused these numbers to be coming in as they are, but I'd like to see what we could do differently. Because I've heard too many success stories of Wakefield residents who have gone to the vocational school and have really had a transformative educational experience. And I think we need to have more of that. And I don't know if it's outreach or how we're doing it, or perhaps how we're doing it at our school department level, and maybe our school department can talk about that. But I just think that that's something, I understand now capacity could be an issue, but going forward, how do we get that in people's minds so that they think about that as a really good option for them? Because I don't think enough students are taking advantage.
I think, I actually think a part of it may be the construction. It could be.
Got a new facility, new options.
I think after that, I'm going to see it in place, but during the process.
Right, oh, right, sure.
And I think, Mr. Mayo, if memory serves, I think, I'm pretty sure we have more applicants than accepted students in the vocational school every year because of the capacity issue.
Yeah. I get calls from people trying to make the call over there, but it's hard.
Any other further questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll take a motion to approve the Vocational School Budget Number 35 as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. All right, items 5D, Budget Number 33, the Wakefield Public Schools. Dr. Lyons and Ms. Blucognon, please come up and join us. I know we have some school committee members here as well. If you'd like to join them at the big kids' table, please feel free. And Sheri, do we have anyone online for this presentation?
We do not.
Okay. All right, well, the floor is yours, Dr. Lyons. Please go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us. It's appreciated. It's good to be here. It's good to sit on the other side of the table, too. I like this. So we have an abbreviated slide deck. There'll be time for questions at the end. We can go back to anything that you might want to address in your questions as we go through this. This is an abbreviated deck or an abbreviated presentation that we made to the, both to school committee and to FinCom in the budget process. So, ready? I got it, I think. There we go. Yeah. So this is just our budget calendar, just highlighting kind of where we have been in the two meetings that we have remaining. We're meeting with you this evening. We'll do our final meeting with FinCom on Thursday evening, right? And so this budget is, we've prioritized in this budget a new teacher contract, which was a really kind of big accomplishment for us. The fact that we've gotten a tentative agreement with the teachers, it took quite a bit of time. This is a four-year agreement. FY '24 is also part of this agreement. The total compensation is 3%, 3.5%, 4%, and 3.5% or 14% over four years, which is in line with what our surrounding districts are getting. In some ways, it's a, it's a kind of a better contract for other reasons. And so one of the things that's a nice feature is that we have highlighted or made a priority in this contract to address parental leave as well, which was a big part of what both the MTA and the WEA was seeking from us. We've also kind of worked really hard in getting additional instructional minutes for students. That was a priority for us and has been a priority for since, for as far back as 2015 and '16. We've been trying to increase the amount of instructional minutes. So that's where we are at this point in time. The tentative agreement has not been ratified yet by the teachers. And the plan is for the WEA to vote this week. And then we will vote on the 23rd, which will be our next school committee meeting after tomorrow night, right? So that's the plan. We're also looking to prioritize and maintain intervention services and resources to ensure academic progress for all students. You know, we've, one of the things that we've done is we've applied for grants, and we've thought creatively about how to replicate grants that have worked for us. So we applied for the last three years to the Department of Education for what they call an acceleration grant. And districts can prioritize that money however they see fit. We have prioritized the entrance or supporting the entrance of our kindergarteners. So they have, for the last few years, they've had a few weeks where they're meeting in smaller groups, about half of their class size, in their home schools. So they meet with their teachers in August before school starts. This has been a huge windfall for us in that when school starts for our kindergarteners that are new to buildings, we've had very little difficulty with transitions, a lot, there's fewer tiers, and kids kind of move about their buildings pretty effectively. But we've also expanded that offering, and we've thought creatively about how can we kind of continue to increase points of acceleration or support intervention services. This year, we started as an after-school project, supporting students in math using, so instead of bringing in tutors, tutors are very difficult to find, we are compensating teachers, classroom teachers, to work with their own students to do what we call a math boost. We're doing that through Wakefield Academy. So that's kind of just other ways that we're trying to kind of thread the needle with decreasing resources. But these are three priorities. The additional three priorities for this FY '25 budget is to fund faculty and staff. We have 604 employees and seven bargaining units. We just settled the teachers, and we will be starting negotiating for six remaining bargaining units this coming year. And so labor is an issue for us. We had a meeting, I was with Mr. Mayo. We met with our legislative delegation, and they talk a lot about the need for labor in the state. But what's often highlighted in labor, they're often talking about construction projects or different, you know, technologies and different spaces that they're trying to fill. But what's often, you know, absent from that conversation is the very real issue that we're having in finding teachers, right? The pipeline for teachers is not what it was a very short time ago. The job has become very difficult, and the needs of students have increased. And I think the appeal that it once had, I think that it's really, it's been hard to fill positions. We used to post an elementary position and get 300 applicants, right? And of the 300 applicants that we got, 65 were very, super competitive. Now we're posting those same positions, and we're getting 50 applicants at elementary. At high school, difficult to fill positions, physics, computer science, different courses. We'll get one or two applicants or three applicants. So that's been something that's very real, that we're starting to think creatively about and how to address that. But that's something that labor and our labor force and how we are bringing people in and retaining them and paying them over time is something that we're really looking closely at. We also want to continue our preventive maintenance work that we're doing on our buildings because we know as we're trying to create sustainable budgets, but as labor goes up and as costs go up, often preventive maintenance is the first thing that gets cut. And it's the first thing that'll bite you over time, and so we're trying to be really thoughtful about that. So these terms, knowns and unknowns, these are terms that, you know, we've picked up from FinCom, where they've said to us, we just want to know what the known challenges are, what are the unknowns, so that we won't be surprised if we're talking about something down the road. So the knowns for us are human resources and personnel, I just mentioned that. The need to create a schedule to provide increased opportunities for intervention, acceleration, and supplemental support. As student needs have increased, we can't meet everyone's needs during the day. So we're trying thoughtfully to think about, how can we expand the day for students? How can we get students in the morning if they're arriving early or after school if they're staying late? So we're really trying to think creatively about how to support students. And that includes counseling services as well as English language learner support. And you'll hear me talk more about that in a moment. Enrollment and space challenges in pre-K are a significant issue for us. This year, we turned away 60 families for our Doyle preschool programming. And so that's a real challenge for us. We also, just as, for a context piece so that you understand, so we are also running two preschool classrooms at the Woodville. So not only is Doyle at kind of capacity in regard to space, we're also running two, what were pilot programs that were approved by school committee. We went from one classroom to two classrooms, and at this point, I don't think we can scale back. Because if we were to scale back, we would be kind of cutting into EI services that we're obligated to provide for students. So more to follow there. Unknowns, balancing the increase in in-district programming needs as well as out-of-district costs. So we get questioned every year about special education, out-of-district costs and increases. So what's happening now, where just a few years ago, we were able, if a student couldn't be educated in district and they needed additional resources or programming that we could not provide, we were able to send them to a number of different schools to get that level of support for them. Well, the issue now is that the majority of those programs are full, right? So they're, and/or if they do have openings, they are now passing off costs back to the district. So what they'll say is, yes, we can take your student, but oh, for this program, we think that they're going to need a para educator. So that additional personnel cost is also passed back to the district in addition to transportation. And transportation costs have gone up between 8 and 14% depending on the type of transportation. So we are really trying hard to build programming whenever possible in district to keep students in district, right? And so, but that means that we have to spend money to save money. And that's kind of a fine line because sometimes if we're hiring two or three positions, that outlay of costs can be significant. And kind of the return doesn't come automatically. It usually comes over the course of a year or two. So that's what I mean by balancing. So a very real issue that we are facing and all municipalities in the state are facing is growing EL populations. The EL, it used to be, it used to be ESL, if you remember, right? English as a second language became English language learners, became English learners, and now has become multilingual learners, MLs. And they're the same population. They're a population of students or families that have moved into districts where their home language is not English, right? And so it's our responsibility to assess what level of English they might have. And then based on the level that they have, there's level 1, 2, 3, and then 3, 4, 5. And that will kind of entitle them to levels of support during the school day for up to two periods or one period or not at all, right? And so we have a very high population of kindergarteners right now that need EL support. Technically, we don't have to provide EL support for kindergarteners. If you don't, it's a bit of a catastrophe because when they get to grade one, they're that much behind their peers. So we are providing support for those students because it's really a necessity. So additional increases in costs for general goods and services are an issue for us. And climate change is something that we are looking at and thinking about, right? And so as we're getting, as it's snowing less and we're warming up, warm days are increasing. The Greenwood Elementary is one of our last buildings that doesn't have the ability to cool. We don't have the ability to cool that building. And the teachers are remarkably gritty. And it's impressive to see a teacher sit crisscross applesauce on a carpet with, you know, first graders or second graders for an hour at a time, you know, while they're teaching when it's 95 or 96 degrees. But it's difficult, and they, I'll be honest with you, the teachers really haven't pushed back in this space, but it's something that we need to be thoughtful about and address before it becomes a greater issue. So challenges and beyond, we talked about enrollment and space needs, our growing ML So challenges and beyond, we talked about enrollment and space needs, our growing ML populations, not only in Wakefield, but across the state. You know, Anthony mentioned that we had some migrant families move into town. Across the Middlesex League, Woo-Win, for example, has had 150-plus families move in that has resulted in many students that need services and other levels of support. So that hasn't happened here yet, but I, we feel like if it's happened across the state and towns around us, that it's likely that it could happen here, but we're paying very close attention to the needs of our ML population. We're building a new high school. We're super excited about this. It is a challenge. It presents every little wrinkle, presents a challenge. Where, as you can see, when you came this evening, I don't know if you looked out and behind us, but we are, we've started removing trees and kind of, the construction and our, our project manager calls it, they call it pad prep. So the preparation of the, of the site where the new high school is going to be built is right behind us on the, on the Beasley Oval. So that, that is exciting, but we don't want to lose sight of the fact of why are we doing it? Because it affected our accreditation. It also affected our ADA accessibility for the current building that we're in. And so other challenges, you know, we need to expand, we are very interested in expanding early college opportunities for students as well as internships for students to work. The more opportunities that our students have to get out and work, the better off we all are. You know, we've visited companies, a few weeks ago, I was at MITRE with a group of superintendents. They have internships where engineers will actually come to the district. We were in touch today and we're looking at kind of building out that program. We're also looking at businesses in town. When we presented at FinCom at Town Hall, we were also thinking about and connecting with, maybe even placing our students within the municipality. DPW and other areas, I mean, it could be a really great experience for kids to understand how it all works. You know? And so we're really looking hard at that. Again, special education programming and EL support is, is critical. Acceleration academies and tutoring programs through Wakefield Academy. We have to think differently about sustainability and creating a sustainable budget. And one of the ways that we're doing that is looking at expanding the school day and thinking about how we can support students. And of course, school safety is, is always critical. It's not at the bottom of the list. It's, it's more toward the top. But in this particular slide, it's, it's, I just wanted to get it in here as well as cyber safety. Right? And so guidance from FinCom and Subcommittee, at this point, I could turn it over to Christine to, to kind of close out the next few slides.
Sure, absolutely. Good evening, everyone. So we meet with a subset of the full school, school committee. It's the finance Subcommittee, which we have two members tonight with us. And we really discuss all aspects of the budget with the finance Subcommittee. But we also meet with our FinCom liaisons. And we want to make sure that this budget is collaborative and transparent. And part of the process is meeting not just with principals and department heads, but with our other communities and Subcommittee's that we partner with. So we really looked at assessing all possible reductions in the current budget and then making sure that we can sustain that moving forward. We looked at all funding sources. We realized that last year during the budget process, everyone was talking about the school department's other revenue sources, the grants, the revolving accounts, circuit breaker, special revenue funds. What else can we support? This is an all-funds budget. And what I mean by that is we look at all revenue sources from everywhere. What are our grants supporting? What are our revolving accounts supporting? And we took that to heart. So our budget book, I, it's online. I don't know if everyone's had a chance to look at it. It's about 30 pages larger this year than last year because we really took our, that communication from last year to heart. And we really dug deep about what those accounts can support. They looked larger than before COVID. So why was those budgets larger? What can that revenue sustain and how long it can sustain? Because really, we're only talking about maybe the next year or two. So really, we wanted to make sure that we communicated well about where all that revenue is coming from and what that can support. So we're really looking at all of those revenue funds. So we also talk about where Chapter 70 is. And we know it's not where it used to be. It's not where it was last year. We're seeing a minimal increase. Now granted, this is from the governor's budget. We're hoping that we'll see some movement in that. I know Steve is nodding his head right now, but we only see about a 1.2% increase from last year. So that's a little disappointing. Next slide. So this is what I like to call the money slide. Where are we now in fiscal '24 and where are we going in '25? So last year, if you remember, last year, we presented a $50 million budget. That's all funds. And what, this is what we're asking the town to fund. That was cut by $500,000 last year. It was in conjunction between the school department, looking at our, our revolving accounts and the town supporting us with ARPA money. So we really kept a $50 million budget. We didn't cut anything. We didn't reduce services. We didn't cut positions, but we reduced where that funding was coming from. So our base in '24 is still $50 million, but the town funded at town meeting last year, it was $49,590, $191. What we're proposing for next year is about a 5.5% increase over that base budget of $49,500. We're asking for $52,319, $699. And as you can see, it's clearly with personnel services. It's clearly with our collective bargaining agreements. It's minimal increases in contractual services, supplies and materials. We've leveled serviced all of those. Slight increase in utility costs, as you know, that happens every year. But other than that, it's really our personnel services, it's our contractual obligations.
Happy to answer any questions you might have.
We will open it up just for questions in a minute, but first of all, I wanted to say thank you for the presentation. I also did want to say, I know a number of us had an opportunity to have tours of the schools over the last couple of months. And I, you know, I was able to attend some of those, not all of them. I know others were able to attend them as well. And I just wanted to start by saying how much we appreciate, or I appreciated that opportunity. It was wonderful to have a chance to meet many of our teachers. It was wonderful to see, you know, really the, you know, superstars you've hired in terms of, you know, principals and assistant principals who are running the schools, each individual school on a day-to-day basis. So I was, I was excited to participate in that. I know in talking to some of the other counselors, I don't think I was the only one who felt that way and just wanted to, you know, first share my appreciation for that. I thought that was really helpful context as we, we viewed the budget book today. So thank you for that.
So much appreciated. Thank you for coming.
So with that, I will open it up to the council for questions. Counselor McLean.
Thank you for the presentation.
Of course.
Good to see you. And thanks for the tours. We, I think I asked you last year, maybe the year before, and I'll ask you again. How are we doing on retention? I think at last, at one point, you said for teacher retention. I understand we have trouble in certain hiring spots, but you said we were the best in the Middlesex League, I think, last year. Are we still doing well with retention?
I haven't checked the recent numbers, but I think a year ago, we were the highest retention rate in the Middlesex League. I'm, I'm guessing we're in a similar space. But we are kind of wearing out our welcome in that space, I can tell.
Sorry to hear that.
I, I think, you know, we're, we're very fortunate. We have amazing teachers here. And I think you saw on, on your tours, you know, what it feels like for kids to be in school. Right? And so, and I think it's one of the things that we're most proud of, Mike, to be honest.
Right.
But, you know, I, I don't know how long, you know, 60, is it 60, close to 70% of our, of the teachers are at the, at kind of the, the top step, right? And so, you know, we're not going to be able to continue what we're doing for much longer unless we're able to really be thoughtful about how we're hiring.
I think people should understand that times have changed. The composition of student bodies changed. I did a $5,000 grant with Lowe's probably about 20 years ago to repaint the old galvan. It's probably putting lipstick on a pig. But that being said, we, it was a real hoot. But when I called Dr. Mo and I said, you know, they're asking us for our numbers on diversity, it's kind of a moment of silence. Cause I think we were 95.5% white at that time. And, you know, our composition has changed. And as you've indicated, the demands are changing relative to English, you know, English language speaking. One of the things I'm curious about though too is, on our tours, you mentioned that there was a bump in kindergarten enrollment. And we have a lot to do in this council in the next few years relative to school buildings, you know, surplus buildings, perhaps surplus buildings, et cetera. And I was concerned because you had indicated that there was a bump. And I'm curious, you know, is that kind of the untold story here? As this town grows, where are we going to be in terms of, I, I don't see it in your numbers. I don't see increases in class size and so forth on your projections. But could you just address that? Are we looking at a potential problem down the road?
Sure. I mean, the big question is, you know, enrollment numbers. We did a, when we, we did a 10-year projection in the planning for the new high school. You know, often what projections don't take into account or can't forecast is the amount of building and expansion that happens in towns. Right? And, and then the question is, you know, and many of our, many developers come into municipalities. And, you know, I think, you know, for example, the head of the lake, I think we worked very closely with Steve. And I think, I think that that was the first project that we've worked on where I feel like allowances were made for police fire in schools where like concrete, we could point to it. Right? And so I feel like we're, we are doing some things well as we're moving on. But I, I think, you know, our 10-year projection is, is, it looks like we should be hovering around 3,500 students in the system, 3,600 students in the system. We're up 50, 60 students from last year. Most districts are hovering at the same or they're down a little bit. So that's positive. So our numbers, I'm cautiously optimistic.
Okay, cautiously optimistic. I was looking for the punchline there.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't get right to it.
No, no problem. It's not an easy, it's not an easy thing. You're, I don't want to prejudice your contract getting passed, but it, it looks like you did a good job. Did you have to adjust steps at all in there too? Or not?
No.
Good. It was more the, the other items that you talked about?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your questions.
Thank you. Other questions? Counselor Danny.
Hi, it's nice to see you.
You too.
It's always great when the schools come in here. Thank you for your budget. And I think that we're in great shape with our schools. And I think that's really wonderful. Are we still able to maintain our class size policy? Is that been able to be maintained?
So far, yeah. I, I, you know, at the upper levels, our class size, our numbers are pretty good. At the, you know, pre-K, K1, 2, you know, we're, we're hovering right at the, at the capacity where we, where, where, kind of where our policies are. In the past few years where we've been over, we've been able to add a classroom at the larger elementaries. If there's a bubble, they call it, they actually call it, this is our bubble class, right? And so, you know, we have those in play right now. But right now, I think we're going to be right near or at our capacity, our numbers as the policies state.
Are we running out of space in any of our schools?
I think, you know, I think all of our schools are, we're using every nook and cranny at all of our elementaries. We're using all of our space at the middle school. And our high school is, it's ready. It's, it's begging to be knocked down and reconstructed. And so, you know, yeah. I mean, really, the big question for, for us and something that I've talked with Steve about is, you know, I mean, what is pre-K and K or pre-K through 1 look like in the next five or 10 years? That's a, that's a big question, you know?
Yeah, I worry about, I worry about the ability to keep our smaller class sizes and then, and then to run, and then running out of space. And we're not going to be able to do it because we don't have space capacity.
Yeah.
And I'm just going to give my little plug is that as we, as our community grows and as the state mandates increased housing, I'm not against it. We don't, I agree, we need increased housing.
Yeah.
But I think that we really need our delegation to be supporting more Chapter 70 funding coming back to, coming back to our community so that we can deliver the educational opportunities that we want for our community. And I think that's really crucial going forward. So, so that's my, that's my take on that. What else do I want to ask? Good, good that you got the instructional minutes when I was on negotiating. We did not. So that, congratulations. That's wonderful. How are like the, the coming out of COVID and with mental health services? Is, is there mental health challenges in the schools? Are we supporting that? And are we, you know, being able to meet the needs?
So are there mental health challenges in the school? Absolutely. Is there a greater range of mental health needs and social emotional needs? Absolutely. And I think that that's probably our biggest challenge is, is, you know, yes, the number's larger, but the need within the number. You know, on the school side, we like to say, you know, when teachers will say, you know, I have more kids, right? More kids don't always equal greater needs. Three, three students, you know, with, with needs can feel like 30, depending on their needs. Right? And 30 can feel like three, depending on their needs. Right? And so, so needs have absolutely increased, to answer your question. Our, our staff, in terms of our counseling staff, has, has increased. We've worked steadily over the last five years to increase counseling services. We've also been creative and have, have gotten two counseling positions through grants, which we're particularly pleased about. Anthony spoke about one of them. Right? And so, you know, we kind of brought that to Anthony or vice versa. And, you know, we collaborated on that. They had an opportunity to get a grant but didn't have districts. So we worked with both Stonem and Melrose to try to make that work. But, so, you know, so the needs are significant. Do we have enough counselors? You know, I think it all depends on the, on the class and the day and the year. But I think we're, we're, the councils are doing great work. They're, we're providing clinical supervision now, like in, in a way that we have not in the past. So we're pleased about that. We're, we're kind of contracting that out to Donna Kosick, who is the head of Elliott Drama Center. And so she's expert and to have her working with our counselors, we're very fortunate. We've increased stipends and we have more interns here now as well. So we've really tried to be creative and to fund things differently. But it's very, it's a, it's a challenge.
Well, great. Thank you all for your, your work on this and, you know, how, the amount of hours that go into developing the budget for the school system and the thoughtfulness that goes into it and the collaborative efforts. So thank you all very much. It's good to see you.
Thank you.
Good to see you as well.
Thank you. Just a comment on Chapter 70 before we, we move on to other questions. So, you know, this is an area I am involved in the Mass Municipal Association's Fiscal Policy Committee. I will say that this is probably the number one advocacy item for, for MMA this year, working with the Mass Association of Superintendents and school committees as well. What we're seeing in Wakefield in terms of the aid increase is not unique to us. So this year, there's a, a minimum aid component in the Chapter 70 formula that says in any given year, per student aid has to increase by, you know, at a minimum $30 per student. This year, for the first time, more than half of the districts in Massachusetts are hitting that minimum aid threshold. And we are one of them for the first time, I think, Steve, at least as I can ever remember. And so one of the-
Except for the year when they went down.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, one of the big advocacy priorities for the MMA is working with the legislature and encourage all of us to reach out to our delegation to increase that minimum aid threshold from the current $30 in the governor's budget to the MMA's proposal to be $100, which would help take that point that we're seeing in Chapter 70 aid and increase that up to about, about three. So that, that is a big issue again from a state policy standpoint that, you know, fortunately, all of our associations that we work with are working on. But, you know, more voices from the members of this council and the community would help as well.
Right, that was the same point that Superintendent and I made at the Chamber of Commerce Legislative Breakfast, which had members from all over the area. And that was our point that we made, that was the best thing they could do for us right now.
Yes, absolutely.
That would help all the communities.
100%, especially when there's such a push for increasing housing is that they need to have some responsibility in supporting us so that we can still provide the quality education that we've been delivering and make it easier, not harder.
Other questions or comments from the council? Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Thank you all for the presentation tonight. I'm going to do this for the second time because I don't want to mispronounce your last name, Christine. I already did this with HR Director. I already did this with HR Director. But I want to start out by saying I, I thought this was an excellent work product. It was a very easy read, even for me to understand the contents in there. I also wanted to echo what my colleague said about the tours of the schools. I found that very, very informative. I also want to thank Principal Webb for letting me play on the basketball game with faculty against the students at the Galvin Middle School. I enjoyed that immensely. There was a lot of enthusiasm by the students and I was especially impressed with how much they cheered for their teachers when their teachers actually scored against them in the basketball game. I watched a lot of the school committee meetings and I'm impressed with, when I look at the chain of command, Dr. Lyons, we're both Navy guys, when I look at the chain of command and you have your finance subcommittee with your FinCom representative and the school department representatives working together and then making your presentations to the school committee. And then, of course, it goes to FinCom and then town meeting. It is a very robust and it is a very thorough process. And I'm just glad that as a town council member, I don't have to be involved at the level that the school committee folks do. But I want to applaud that effort because I think sometimes that goes unnoticed just how much time and effort is spent by elected officials working with the school department, working with the finance committee to put a project of this magnitude together. The one substantive question I had was the, the ESER grants end in September of this year. Are they about $420,000? Was that what it was?
For this year, I think that that was the, the amount for this year.
So what percentage of your budget is affected by the fact that the ESER grants are ending?
So it's about 4%. So ESER, as you know, we had ESER 1, 2, and 3. And ESER 3 is the one you're speaking of. It was the largest of the three, but it, it has sunsetted. We have used it for a multitude of areas, but unfortunately, as we've all talked about, it's one-time funding. So once that's gone, we have to look to ways to support what we've built. We don't want to undo all the programs that we've done since COVID and with this COVID funding. But we've, we've held on to all of our services and programs and staff since we've had that funding. So we're, we're sort of proud of it that we were able to look at all the funding sources and to maintain what we, what we've built.
We're using revolving accounts, offsets there. We're using circuit breaker differently than we have in the past. We're using all of our resources differently than we have in the past to create a sustainable budget. You know, you've heard me allude to, you know, both the use of grants and thinking about expanding the day or how do we do that for students, right? And so that's just a few examples. But thank you for the feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Dobrowski.
Thank you for the presentation and the work that you've done across the board. I'm, I really feel like we're getting to a breaking point relative to our, our school capacity. And I know, I think about Walton when the construction was done and the renovation there. I mean, you, you weren't in a good situation before that. It improved the situation, but as I understand it, you're pretty much at capacity now with that. And there is nowhere to go. I guess you could potentially go up, but I think even that's not structurally not even like feasible, but there's, you can't go any further than, than, on that, on that plot. And I'm just thinking about that more and more in the context of this discussion about how this new state, you know, mandate. I mean, I really feel like the, the state's really done, done a real number on us because they're talking about trying to expand all this housing and mandate that within our community at the same time that we're seeing a significant drop in, in a percentage increase of funding. You mentioned 1.2%. I understand that's the governor's budget, but that's where at 1.2. I don't recall another year in recent history where we had a 1.2%. I mean, we were, we were several, several percentage points higher than that. Am I recalling correctly on that?
You're spot on.
And it really, especially frustrates me when we had back, now, I guess going in two years now, had been told that, oh, we have this, this quote unquote millionaire's tax that was supposed to increase all this funding for education. The percentage that we're talking about here now, 1.2%, is less than before that passed. So we, we're not realizing that. So at the same time, we have this, and so I'll call this the state problem first and foremost. We don't, I, I think we're going to soon find, find ourselves in a position where we can't keep adding on to our existing facilities. Even if we can, that's an expensive proposition. Do we, at some point, have to think about, okay, do we require an additional elementary school in order to meet demands? Or early education centers when you're talking about if you treat pre-K, K, and maybe even one differently theoretically, you know, to try to free up capacity? Those are all very expensive, you know, propositions that we're talking about here with very limited state support to get us there. And so when I'm looking at your increases, 3.5, 4% and 3.5 again, that's, so those are contractual obligations. That's the expectation that our teachers have. But the 1.2% is nowhere near keeping pace with that in any meaningful way. So then that falls on, on our taxpayers to have to try to shoulder that burden. And what are the options? We, as a town, can try to find other ways to try to scrimp and save, but candidly, your budget drives our entire town budget and it really drives our entire, our, our tax base is directed to school because it's not just 52, 52 million, but also all the benefits and everything else that goes with that. You're the lion's share, no pun intended, you're the lion's share of, of our taxes. And so I, I'm really concerned about, you know, the, the position of the state. And I'm, I'm thinking about ways that we can constructively, not just call our, you know, our, our delegation, but figure out ways that we can constructively try to, and I understand what Counselor Johns is saying about, you know, what the MMA is doing, but it's, this is a real crisis for us, I think, in the making. And as much as I appreciate the grants, they sunset. And as much as I appreciate you mentioning sustainable budgeting, which I'm a huge fan of, that can't be realized if the revenue is not coming in, in a, in a even remotely predictable way. And as I'm seeing it, with that chapter 70 and, you know, this, this promise of the millionaire's tax being the solve for education and not turning out to be that way, it becomes a real problem for us. And, and I don't know how that gets solved. So I don't know if there's anything that you've thought of creatively and other ways that we can try to address this from the state level because it does seem to be more like, more of a state issue than anything.
Well, I, I think we're in agreement that the per pupil in chapter 70 needs to increase, like just as a starting point.
Right.
My feeling is, this is my, just my, my position. My, my feeling is very strongly that the state is, has a healthy rainy day fund. I think it's raining right now. And, and so that's just my, my position. And so, and I say that, Ed, because if you look at districts around us and how they're being kind of forced into making cuts that will set districts back years, right? Like it takes moments to undo. It takes years to build. And so that's something that, you know, I've talked to Steve a lot about this and, you know, we're trying to, sustainability is, is kind of what the school committee has kind of drummed into this process. Sustainability, 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 right? And so we have to be able to do this over time. And so we are also looking at how other districts are managing cutting their budgets or cutting back. It's, it's, it's not appealing, you know, if you look right at it, because they're, they're cutting personnel, you know? And they're, you know, again, cutting programs that it took a lot of time to build. They're also cutting projects. They're scaling back projects. And so, you know, I, again, I think Wakefield has been prudent in how we have used money. And, and I, I'm grateful to be here and be part of that. But I agree with you. I think the state needs to do more, starting with the per pupil minimally. And I think the, you know, the millionaire's tax is, that feels like an illusion right now. You know, we worked really hard to get that. We heard it was going to higher ed in year one. I don't, I don't know where it's earmarked for this coming year, you know? You know? And so that's, it's a struggle for us. And so we've been clear with MASSS. We're working very closely with MASSS. They are advocating for us at the State House. Mary Burke will be kind of, is now the co-director of MASSS. She's working with Tom Scott. Tom Scott is going to be kind of moving into a kind of a consultancy role and Mary's going to be taking over. She is a keen legislator or a keen person that has been at kind of the legislator's sides when they're kind of making these decisions at the State House, which is going to be a plus for us. But what does it mean in regard to something concrete? I don't know, you know?
I guess, and the other observation that I've made and, and I realize and to your school committee's credit, we didn't have striking teachers like a lot of other communities have had of late. But one of the observations that I've, I've, I've made in, in the last couple of years relative to this is, it seems as if so much of the focus of the teachers' union has been on the particular district and negotiating with the district and finding fairness within a contract, which is, which is appropriate, of course. That's their job. But I haven't heard enough of the discussion from the union side focused on the greatest source of this revenue after, you know, the, the municipal, you know, tax. And that's the state funding piece of it. So in, in your experience, especially with this latest round, have you seen the kind of emphasis or pressure, if you will, being placed upon the state and lawmakers relative to, hey, this is a real problem because for us to get paid, we need the resources. The community can only do so much. They're relying upon the state. And when these numbers are dwindling down like that, that creates a problem and it's going to mean that we're going to be paid less money as a result of that because there's not, isn't the money to, to go around because we're not being resourced appropriately. Are you hearing enough of that discussion?
From, from the NTA?
Yeah, from, from the, from the, the unions to the state relative to that piece.
So I, I have heard bits and pieces of that, but nothing that I can point to, to say that it's resulting in returns to districts.
Because to me, that seems like one of the best bargaining ways. I mean, as much as, you know, the unions are bargaining with the district, why aren't the unions, you know, using their, peddling the influence, you know, on, you know, on Beacon Hill? Because that ultimately, if that funding doesn't free up to us, we're not in a position to be able, able to do that. And we cannot have sustainable budgeting if we don't have that reliable, you know, revenue coming in. Which, by the way, it was supposed to be higher than what we got in the years past and it's actually quite lower.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we're, we're in, we agree more on this than you know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from anyone who hasn't spoken yet?
Mr. Johns?
Oh, yes, please, sorry.
Thank you. Thank, well, first of all, thank you all very much for your time tonight. And for those of you that were able to join the tours, they were, I think, you know, very informative. So a couple of, couple of the follow-up points, I think, that you made were, were probably as a result of seeing some of that, some of the work in action. So I appreciate that. Just to follow up a bit on Counselor Dobrowski's thoughts, I, I couldn't agree more that, that there is a fundamental need for changes in the chapter 70, and I would say chapter 70 formula. I think what has happened in the last few years is the Commonwealth's, you know, ability to effectively just add to the bottom line of chapter 70 without changing the formula, right? So, so you, you put more money in the, in the pile and you raise all, you know, you know, you, ah, you raise all boats, right? But that doesn't necessarily bring any sort of equity to those that are, those that are, have a greater need and those that may have a, have a lesser need. And I think that's fundamental to the flaw in the formula. Or maybe the, maybe it's not a flaw as much as it's not, you know, current. And I think we're, we're seeing these increases in, in housing and increases in population, not only of, not only a greater population of students in general, but of a more needy population. And we in public education, that's, that's our, that's our work, that's our passion, that's our love. We want to make that, we want to make that happen, but it needs to be, you know, in partnership, not only with a municipality who has been nothing but, nothing but a, a supportive of education. And we're incredibly grateful for the partnership that we do have. But I think our advocacy with the, with our legislative delegation as well as, as our professional associations has to be there. That is the biggest impact that certainly can be made. So maybe there's something that, that we could collaborate on. A, a, you know, not to say that, that a letter is going to do something, but it's a start. Maybe something that speaks clearly about what the concerns for fiscal year '25 are as we're, as we're facing them. So I, I couldn't agree more that that's, that that's where the future lies. On this, on the sustainability piece, I know that, that Dr. Lyons spoke to it and I think each of, each of you have, have those thoughts. That's something that we've really taken heart in the last couple of years. You know, we were all very grateful around the country to receive the ESER funding and, but we, we didn't, we knew that the cliff was coming. It wasn't, it wasn't a surprise. So with the conversations we were having like, like a year ago now, especially at the, the finance committee level, we knew what was coming. We imposed and insisted that the administration, and they got all sorts of compliments for it, as they should have, that they take a very sharp pencil to make sure that, that what the type of things that we were bringing into the budget were not only needed but sustainable. We have very few real increases in, 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 in our FDE count. While we may be, there may be a shift from the funding source, but the aggregate number isn't growing because of that, that fine-tooth comb there. So we are, we are, we have prioritized and understand what the needs of students and needs of teachers are. And, and a lot of that was funded through ESER dollars, you know, bringing in needs for, for, for student behavior and social emotional learning and learning loss. Those things were all real. You know, COVID seems like 100 years ago, but it was a very, very busy and very intense three, three and a half year period, right? And, and we're not, we may be out of it officially, but we're, but we're still, you know, you know, you know, struggling to make the, to make, ah, to make that end work. So the type of feedback that the council gave, that the finance committee gave us, you know, a year ago now, the administration, I think, did an, did an excellent job. And I think the finance, the school committee was pretty, was very much on top of those sorts of, those sorts of things to make sure that, that how are we going to, how are we going to use the dollars? And what are, what are our greatest resources? And certainly, how can we appropriately and lawfully use the, ah, the revolving funds and the special, special funds that, that are at our, at our disposal? You know, we want to make sure that there is, there, that there is balance and understanding in that, which is why I think to Christine's point, the additional pages, if you will, that are in the school budget book, 30 something of them, 25, 30 of them, speak specifically to some, a really deep dive into the revolving funds. Because it's critically important to know that not all the revolving funds can be used. It's not, every dollar is at the school committee's discretion. We're not, we can't take money out of the, the athletic revolving fund that parents and kids pay for their athletic fees to pay salaries to teachers, right? So the bulk of those revolving funds have to have a, they have a particular use and a special purpose. So it's important that, that that's obviously part of the conversation. And, and that, if there's anything that came out of the, some of the, some of the, some of the challenges a year ago was that that conversation became public and became a very, very open and, I think, quality conversation. But we are, we are using revolving funds in some, some specific and unique ways. We are bringing in additional costs to revolving funds that hadn't been in there before. I know the superintendent and the town administrator are working very closely on, on what are some of those expectations and we want to be able, able to meet those. But that in and of itself isn't necessarily sustainable. So we are, we are looking at three, four years out and, and we don't want to dry up anything while at the same time, we want to make sure that we are meeting our expectations for, for the, for, for town as well. So all of the questions that you've asked, all the things we've talked about, we, we've spent a lot of time thinking about and planning on. And, and I think we're in a pretty good place for fiscal '25 and '26 and even the beginnings of '27. But therein lies the future and therein lies some of the challenges that we face. Let me just say one more thing because a couple of councils asked about enrollments and, and where, where are we looking at that? And those, those are important things. Those are things completely beyond our control. You know, every student that, that resides in Wakefield, we have a, an appropriate and a loving responsibility to take care of that child. And we're going to do everything that we can to, to do that. It demands those resources. Some of the balance, I think, that needs to be part of that argument or that conversation is, is a recognition that every year we also, you know, also graduate 200 to 250 students. So it's not like we just keep, keep, keep adding, right? 200-plus students leave every year. So there is that, that, there is, there is that, that space as, as students move through. If we're talking about, you know, this year, as Dr. Lyons said, about 60 or so new students coming in, but 60 students across 12 grades is not a, is not, is not a huge, you know, ah, ah, dramatic effect, right? So let's not make sure, let's not have the rhetoric get ahead of the, the reality of, of what some of that, what some of that is. But that being said, as you saw in some of the tours, especially in the elementary grades[1770.04] But that being said, as you saw in some of the tours, especially in the elementary grades, at the Doyle and K and one, where we're seeing our tightest and highest, you know, students per class. So Counselor Danek, he talked about it and knows full well, as a former colleague, how attentive we are to the class size policy. You're spot on to ask that. So those are realities about, you know, we want to make sure that we're paying attention, and where our greatest needs are as far as class size and capacity are in the elementary grades, the early elementaries, and the Doyle. It's a shame that we have to turn families away, as we have. That's a shame that we do that. And I think when those of you that came and enjoyed the, ah, the Doyle tour, saw that firsthand, how we're using every inch of that, of that building, and that's, that needs to be a huge part of our next conversation around, around, you know, building needs. But anyways, I certainly wanted to share some thoughts, and I appreciate the opportunity to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Markham. I just, you know, a couple of reflections that, you know, I've had as we've kind of gone through this conversation, and first of all, I want to again thank you for the presentation today, the excellent work product in the budget book that we were able to review, and just the thoughtfulness that goes into this budget. I know that, you know, this isn't something you guys put together on the fly, this is really years of pre-planning that starts, you know, while you're doing the budget cycle beforehand, and it shows with the work product that's produced. You know, three things that I just wanted to comment on, because I think they're really relevant in terms of thinking about the school department budget. And first is, while the ESER funds are going away, I don't think we should kid ourselves that the extra need that those funds were intended to support for the schools has gone away. And I say that as a parent of, you know, children in three different grades in the Wakefield Public Schools, it's different now than it was pre-COVID in terms of student behaviors, in terms of the social and emotional impact. I mean, the, the way in which students interact with each other, the way in which kids are sort of figuring out how to navigate school is totally changed, and, you know, going through the tours, and again, you know, going to the schools just to, you know, as part as a parent, you know, the environment is complex, it is difficult, and it is a constant juggling act for every member of the teaching staff, the administrative staff, to kind of balance the needs of every student in every moment of every day. It's incredible work, and I do want to make sure that we as a community understand that while those funds are going away, not only do we not want to just sort of stop doing things that we were doing, but I think we really need to recognize that the environment in which we are providing an education to our kids has changed very, very dramatically. I know, I mean, I don't need to tell you guys that, but it is something that is relevant to the budget discussions that we have here, and so I want to make that point. The second thing I want to reflect upon is the revolving funds, and I do want to thank, you know, Dr. Lyons, you, and the school committee for, you know, engaging in this discussion with the finance committee, with the town administrator over the last year, because I think it has been a good one, and I know you and I have had some time talking about this, I've talked to members of the school committee as well. I think that it's important, I think it's appropriate, and I think that it's good that where it is appropriate, we are allocating, you know, expenses for things like benefits and facility usage to those revolving funds. That's a step in the right direction, I think, to, you know, having kind of a budget with the right level of control and visibility in it. And I think it's a step in the right direction for us to think about the fees that we charge for some of those activities. And, you know, that brings me to sort of the third point that I would make, which is I do look at, you know, kind of the out-years and the charts that you present. You know, I see expenses going up every year, but, you know, revenues staying flat. And I think one of the things that we have to look at for any service that we offer, whether it's the schools or anywhere else in town, is whether there are decisions we need to make around, you know, revenues in the future. You know, should we be charging more for facility usage? Should we be charging more for Wakefield Academy? And those areas where we do have discretion, you know, user fees, it was, gosh, probably five, six years ago now that we were able to reduce user fees, which was wonderful. But, you know, in time, as costs go up, do we need to be reflective of that? And so I would just, as we think through this, I mean, none of us like raising fees, particularly for the students that we serve, but I do think it's a reality that we just need to have as part of the conversation as we think about the budget going forward. I don't think the right solution in the future is to stop allocating appropriate costs to those funds, I think it's to make sure that we're balancing the revenue and expense in the appropriate way. And I think with the transparency that, you know, we've created and kind of the open dialogue that we've created, I think that's a good opportunity to do it. But again, just finally want to reiterate my thanks for the work that's gone into this, and my thanks, you know, both as a member of the town council, but also as a parent for the great work that the schools do. I mean, I am proud every day to send my children to the Wakefield Public Schools. I am impressed every day with the caliber of the education that the Wakefield Public Schools provide, the creativity, the entrepreneurialism, the caring and compassion of the teachers, the principals, and everyone who works at the school department. It's something that I think we as a town should be really proud of. I'm really proud of it and really grateful for the work that everyone does.
Thank you for the kind words.
Anyone who hasn't had a chance to speak yet before we? All right, Mr. McLean, I'll give you the last comment then.
Just in response to your comments, Mr. Markham, I'm not talking about rhetoric, I'm talking about reality, and I'm concerned, you know, I remember 20 years ago, or whenever it was, being at a town meeting and having an attorney for the developer of the Spirit Building, if you remember what it was, saying, you know, a lot of children don't live in those buildings. Sometimes they do. And as we grow by thousands in the last few years, I am concerned, and as we go into multifamily housing, which is now on the boards, multifamily housing means families, families mean children. So I am a little bit concerned about capacity, and that's the only point that I think some of us are trying to make. I'm not letting the rhetoric get ahead of the reality, I'm just afraid of the reality. Thank you.
Thank you. So just closing out this, so this is not a budget that we as a town council vote on, but I would actually entertain a motion to instruct Town Administrator Mayo and Dr. Lyons to write an advocacy letter to our delegation, as well as leadership in the legislature, around some of the Chapter 70 challenges that we've talked through. I do think that that would be a powerful statement to say, I know we've said it individually, but having something in paper always helps. So is there a motion to that effect?
Some.
In a second? Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you again, appreciate your patience tonight, and we will see you at town meeting in a couple of weeks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. All right, hopefully, Mr. Gill, you're still with us for item 5E, budget number one, the town council budget.
Your last budget.
This is our last. We go back to the beginning, Steve. All right, whenever you're ready, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The town council budget, we are recommending an increase to this budget of $125,020 over the current fiscal year. This increase breaks down $120,815 increase to the tax levy portion of the budget, and a $4,205 increase to the water-souring insurance transfer line item. Under the personal services portion of this budget, the increase is $118,615. This includes contractual and negotiated increases. We also included a new position, Assistant Town Administrator, budgeted at $100,000. This budget also, this portion of the budget also includes the positions of Community and Economic Development Director, Erin Kokinda, the Communications Director, Jen McDonald, and the Strategic Growth and Development Director, Samantha Elliott, are all included in the town council budget. Several small increases on the expense portion of the budget. We increased office supplies at $1,000. The environmental sustainability line item, $1,000, and the dues and subscription line item, $200, which is for the MMA dues. The total budget request for fiscal '25 is $706,455, with $618,135 coming from the tax levy, $88,310 coming from a water-souring insurance transfer. I do want to point out that we do collect revenue within this department. The main driver of that is liquor licenses. Last year, we collected over $125,000 from this department. Year-to-date so far, almost $60,000.
Great. Thank you. And Sherry, do we have anyone from Finance Committee for this one?
We do not.
All right. Mr. Mayo, any context you want to provide, given some of the changes in this budget?
The only real, only real substantive change is, and we've talked about this, we kind of talked about succession planning, talked about it at two retreats, we've talked about it a little bit in context in some other departments, and what I, my thoughts were is to take advantage of perhaps a retirement in another area, to then focus on bringing in a, because, let me put it this way, Kevin and I are getting any younger, we're not going to be around here forever, we have to start thinking about, you know, what's going to happen when we're gone, besides the confetti and party you're going to throw because you don't have to talk to us anymore. But I do believe the town account is the hardest position to fill in municipal government, no matter what municipal government it is. What I, my thoughts were is to bring in someone maybe halfway through the year, or start advertising halfway through the year for that one, bring in someone that can come in in a senior accounting position to learn the ropes from Kevin, bring Kevin over in a kind of a Chief Financial Officer, Assistant Town Administrator position, that does start to get some money in this budget, so you're not going to see a big jump if you were to go that way in the future. Because I think it's important that we start thinking about succession planning, you know, for some of our senior people. I will also point out, and I don't want this to sound like it's a complaint, because it isn't, but most communities our size do have an assistant or a deputy town administrator. One of the few that don't, in years gone by, when other town councillors or select board members at the time have asked me, I've always said no, but it is getting much more complex, a little more complex now. We are getting a little bit larger, a community that is basically the same size as ours. They were actually teasing me at a meeting that I went to, a state meeting, they said, "Steve, we never see you." And I said, "Well, you don't see me because you have a town administrator, a town manager, a deputy town manager, an assistant town manager. Someone has to be back at the farm." All three of them were at that meeting, which I thought was kind of crazy, but that's fine. So I think that we do need to think about, and think about that for the future, and something that the council made very clear to me, we talked about it during retreat. So other than that in here, other than that, you just have normal, you know, steps and contractual, you know, this budget would be ho-hum, 4%, and you'd be done talking about it now if it wasn't for this. So that's the kind of context around that.
Great. And just to clarify, I think, you know, while there is sort of a salary impact to making some of these changes, if I'm following the kind of bodies correctly, we're not actually talking about an FTE impact?
No, not at, not at this time, yes.
Great, thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Counselor McLean?
Steve, when is your contract up? The three years of the six months?
June 30th, 2026.
6/30/26, okay. And if it's not, and let me ask another question, I saw a $48,000 position that was being, the ARPA money was running out on, what budget was that in? Was that in ours too?
No, there was.
There was health.
There was health in here, Mr. Ms.
Health and services, yeah.
So on this one, when you say it's not an FTE, I'm just trying to get my brain around that, where's the $100,000 come?
Well, there may be, well, the thought was is that if there were a retirement in another department, that position would not be replaced, it'd be replaced, you know, with kind of a senior accountant sort of position that would kind of take over for Kevin, so, or learn the ropes from Kevin, I should say. So that position is not, is not filled, so there is, Kevin comes over to me, or works with me more, so that's what I'm saying. There's not a new person. There's a vacancy, we're filling it in a different way.
Where does the $100,000 go?
Well, that would be the difference between giving the Assistant Town Administrator more money than now, and giving a senior accountant maybe more money that was in the budget before for that.
And is it legit, is there a fair question to ask what Kevin's timeline is? I know sometimes in government, you can't ask that, so I don't know if you can ask that.
You know, I would say, well, Kevin can answer that.
If he wants.
I assume his timeline is forever, right?
Right.
Actually, it is to be determined that, you know, I do a couple dates out there, you know, could it be a year, could it be two years? I, I would say no later than June of '26 would be the latest, I would probably stay on board.
I guess what I'm wondering is whether this is, you know, given all the items we've discussed already tonight, relative to trying to be conservative and maybe saving something in the budget, whether this is premature. I know we've talked about succession planning, but, you know, I'm also a little concerned that if we set up a system that has a deputy, then the next town council will inherit that and the funding that goes with it. Those are my concerns.
Thank you. Counselor Dubrowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have mentioned this to Steve already, I see succession planning differently than this. I do think that there is tremendous knowledge that both Kevin Gill and Steve Mayo provide in their respective roles. I would like to see an arrangement whereby we bring in someone, if there's an expected retirement in accounting, we bring in someone who can be an understudy of Kevin Gill with the expectation that that person then ends up taking over for Kevin Gill. Similarly, I would much prefer to see someone that is, that we bring in as a deputy or assistant town administrator with the expectation that that person is learning from Steve and then ultimately becomes Steve. So you want to call it, you know, like deputy, I mean, it's like, you know, a vice president who then takes, assumes the responsibility. There's so much knowledge that Steve could impart upon someone, and I think someone who's working with him directly and shadowing, you know, Steve, you have a lot to offer to someone, and I think if you're able to give that to the person whom we see as your successor, then I think it's a better investment, because the job that Steve has, this CEO role, it matters a ton. And Steve, at this point, has really saved the town millions of dollars when you go across from, not just AAA bond ratings, we talk about a lot, but I'm saying like, the way that you've done financing for different projects, where you're fiscal budgeting, for a lot, in a lot of ways. This is a big job, and I would really like to see someone that comes in that we think has, you know, all the opportunity and the skill set to be able to have as smooth a transition as we can. That, to me, is the point of succession planning, to have a smooth transition. So I'm not necessarily opposed to the investment because I think it's a necessary one, but I don't, I don't quite understand why we wouldn't have Kevin Gill as Chief Financial Officer, you know, he, you, Kevin is, Kevin knows what he's doing more than anybody, but have someone who comes in again, who's his understudy, who can then take over more seamlessly, and have someone come in for Steve, who's his understudy, who could also serve a similar role. I think that's how we get, then, three years from now, an accounting department that has all that institutional knowledge that's been imparted upon them, in the same way that we have a town administrator's office that has the same institutional knowledge. I don't think that the arrangement as it's been proposed gets us to that same, meeting those same objectives.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Vincent?
Now, I'll defer to Counselor Danek.
Okay.
I understand where you're coming from, Counselor Dubrowski, but under that scenario, just help clarify for me, if we had a deputy town administrator to learn under Steve's wings, when Steve left and that person became the town administrator, who would be the deputy town administrator?
I don't know that we necessarily need to do that, I think we need.
And see, that's where you and I disagree.
I'm saying, I don't know, I don't know if we necessarily, I think we'd have to assess at that point, or.
So Counselor Vincent, continue.
Yeah, that's okay, I asked him a question, that's fine. So I'm a big advocate of having a deputy town administrator, I've made that clear numerous times, and I know this is becoming Navy Night, but I look at being a commanding officer, which he is, by the way, we're the Joint Chiefs of Staff, so don't think that you have supervision over us, and an executive officer. And what I'm accustomed to for 26 years in the military is the executive officer knows the day-to-day functions of what's going on at the command, so that the commanding officer has time to function on the bigger issues. And what I found in my two years here on the town council is that Steve, unlike many of his colleagues in other municipalities, both larger, smaller, and smaller than ours, is responsible for all the day-to-day activities. And to me, that's just too much of a, too much of a burden, too much responsibility. And I'll give you an example. I think if we had a deputy town administrator, our master plan wouldn't be in the position that it was in, because I think we would have somebody that could devote their time to work with MAPC, for instance, on something like the master plan, somebody that could get regular briefings from a state agency in that case, to give us an update of what was going on. I think sometimes relying on Steve to have to do everything under the umbrella doesn't, from an efficiency standpoint, work very well for us. I also think that from a succession plan, we need to invoke that now and start that now, because we do have a situation where Steve's contract is up in two years, and if we lose Kevin in sometime in 2026, we're losing two major folks at the same time. And I think that we've been fortunate. And I think that we've been fortunate that Steve has the qualities and the capabilities to function solely as a town administrator, but we don't know if we get a replacement. I think that's unfair to the replacement, to expect them to have to assume all those responsibilities as well. I also, the other part about it I look at is when you leave a command in the military, you leave what's called a turnover file. You inherit a turnover file that gives you the A to Z about what's going on as far as your responsibilities, and you add to that as you go along, and you turn that over to the next person. In this situation, we don't have anything like that, and we have all this institutional knowledge that's going to go to one person to take over. I don't think from an efficiency standpoint, that's, to me, that's advisable. I like the idea of having a town administrator and a deputy town administrator. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Denny?
Yes, I agree with Councilor Dubrasky as well as Councilor Vincent, and I will just say is that having somebody who is able to learn from somebody and grow into a position is a really great benefit. It's a great benefit. It makes that person more productive when they do get into that, assume that role because they can be on the ground running. I also think that having an assistant town or deputy town administrator, whatever we wanna call the person, will allow us. We have so many challenges and opportunities facing this town. I think that, I think of everything that is going on, and we have great things going on. We have challenging things going on, but I know that it's a lot. And if we wanna be proactive and really moving this town forward, I think we do need to, to think about changing what we have and doing this succession planning because I think that's gonna be two, two big obstacles. And as somebody who, who assumed a leadership role in a college with no predecessor and having to figure it out on my own, there could have been better ways that that could have been done in more, more helpful ways. So, I think that it's a really important conversation that we're having.
Thank you, Councilor. Questions or comments from anyone who hasn't spoken yet?
Get somebody who has spoken, then, Steve.
Sure.
So, what I'm trying to figure out from what you said, Councilor Dubrasky, is would you be more favorably inclined to actually be looking for two FTEs? The people you're talking about, the people that would learn under Steve and the person that would work under and learn from Kevin?
Well, I understand it, you're, it sounds like accounting has a retirement coming up. So, that would just be a replacement, basically, but that role would be a more senior role with the expectation, or call it a more junior role that, that becomes a more senior role, but the same expectation. And as far as with Steve, I think the only new FTE would be the assistant or deputy town administrator, and that would be a role where I think where it would be a deliberate hire of someone who would be expected to then take over when Steve determines he is ready to retire. And then, as far as what comes of that role, that's, sure, that's an open discussion. If this consensus is, this is a permanent position that should, you know, that should withstand a transition, then so be it. Okay, that's fine, that's a discussion we had. I'm not saying it's just temporary, but I'm saying, right now, we should at least fill that with a very deliberate approach with expectation that that person is expected to be the next town administrator.
I'm just saying that that's, I'm trying to clarify that, Steve, because, you know, if that's the better idea, and I don't know whether it is or isn't, then it may be that more money should be added so that two separate individuals. When you say Steve's senior accountant, is that in your mind the person that's gonna fill a retirement position? Or is that the person that you're hoping to take over for Kevin?
Oh, I think we wanna groom someone to take over for Kevin.
Right, so, what I'm saying is maybe we wanna go, you know, no offense to the Navy, Bob, because, you know, my dad was Navy, my mother-in-law was even Navy, my father-in-law was a lifetime Navy, but I am concerned that we, at some point, we're gonna stop spending like drunken sailors. That being said, I would hope that we would consider doing more of the option of, you know, instead of having something murky, having a specific person that would be designed to take over for either, I, for both of you, both of you, as opposed to something that's more ill-defined.
So, just a couple of observations from my perspective. So, first of all, I wholeheartedly agree with Councilor Vincent that I think that it's been a gap for us not to have a deputy, and I, you know, I see it again through the MMA work. I mean, there are towns a heck of a lot smaller than us that have deputies. And it's because the work is challenging, and there's a lot. And I've also seen towns that have had failed town administrator searches or folks that have not worked out that have no backup whatsoever, and it puts the town at risk. And it puts it at risk in a way that we, as the council, as, you know, Councilor Vincent sort of generously called us the Joint Chiefs for the town of Wakefield, would really struggle to address. And so, I think that this is an area of risk for us, being so sort of thin at the top of, of the, the organization. And I do think that it's something that we should address. I think that the process, Mr. Mayo, that you've laid out is a thoughtful one, but it is also a process that has some risks, right? It's predicated on the fact that someone may retire, and that may or may not happen. People's circumstances change all the time. It's predicated on, you know, Mr. Mayo being here a certain amount of time, Mr. Gill being here a certain amount of time. All of those things could change in an instant. I think, though, the common denominator of all of this is that there is an investment that, you know, we as a council would need to make to enable succession planning in any way, shape, or form. If we're just talking about finance and taking kind of an accounting-level position and elevating that to someone who has the, the education, the experience to become a town accountant, we will be spending more money for that position than we're spending today. Certainly, if we're talking about an assistant town administrator, whether that's kind of repurposing the role that Kevin's currently in or hiring someone new, we're talking about an investment of funds. So, I'm supportive of the budget request. You know, I would defer to Mr. Mayo to figure out how exactly this stage is out, just given the fact that there are dominoes that would need to fall to predicate that. But I would expect that as we go through that process, Mr. Mayo would have open discussions with us, give us a chance as a council to weigh in, and ultimately will, you know, move us in a direction that I think we all agree that we need to go in, which is to really sort of beef up some succession planning and some backup for these two critical positions that we have here in town.
We are absolutely not gonna spend anything until the dominoes start to fall.
But again, I think we have to appropriate the money so that we are able to come up with a gay plan for when those dominoes do, do fall. Councilor Butt?
And I just wanna add, I agree with everything that's being said. Like, we're talking about succession planning in the future, but, you know, through the performance review process that we put in place, like, we need more support now, too. You have too many direct reports. I think all of us that manage realize that. Like, there needs to be something done in, in roles and responsibilities at your, you know, like, top-level, team-level management. And so, I appreciate us talking about succession planning, but I also see an opportunity to us to fix some, I like that word, Jonathan, like, risk that we have now of, that are very clear as we kind of are going through the performance review process, and it's what you're going through with your team of just, you know, I think I've lost count, but you have like 14 direct reportees?
I'd have to count them.
Yeah, and that's, that's just two, I mean, you know, it's not best practices. And hoping something, as we approved, you know, Amy's position earlier, that this is something Jonathan talked about of her helping you think about best practices and what the correct number is, you know, to make the town function the best that it can.
Thank you. Mr. Mullin?
Mr. Chair, just one thing. When we talk about picking a successor for the town administrator, we have to bear in mind we have a charter which does speak to the subject, albeit vaguely enough so that we could pretty much do whatever the town council wanted. The town administrator, it says, shall be a person of proven administrative ability, specially qualified by education and training with at least five years full-time paid experience as a city or town administrator, an assistant city or town administrator, or the equivalent public or private sector level experience. That's not necessarily inconsistent with the way you're thinking of going, but I would point out that appointing an assistant town administrator with the hope that he would replace Steve after gaining some additional experience in Wakefield essentially pushes up the pressure point of coming up with Steve's successor. Instead of going through a kind of full process two or three years from now, we would be going through a different process now, looking for an assistant town administrator. And the kind of people that we would, if we were looking for a town administrator, find applying to Wakefield probably wouldn't be interested in being somebody's number two. I'd also just note that Linfield, which I represent, as you know, is about half the size of Wakefield, and it has an assistant town administrator in addition to a town administrator.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up on that?
Please.
Tom, does that mean, I mean, is it, would it be okay, since the charter doesn't mention an assistant town administrator, to appoint an assistant town administrator?
Well, an interesting question that I haven't checked is, who would actually be responsible for the appointment under our charter? Generally, as you know, there are just a handful of appointments that your council does, and Steve is responsible for almost everything else. I don't think anybody here wants Steve to be out of the process of picking an assistant town administrator, but if we're talking about that person as the likely successor, I think your council wants to be intimately involved in that.
So, I would just make the observation, I think, the way that I think about this, and maybe this is just me, hiring an assistant town manager, assistant town administrator, that would be someone that I think we hope could grow and apply for a town administrator position as we go. But we'd also have to see how they perform, and so I wouldn't, I don't know that I would view it as a foregone conclusion that that would be the person that we would hire. It may be that we hire someone and they're great as an assistant, but they wanna stay there, and we've gotta go outside. Now, we've still built some institutional knowledge because we have, you know, basically a number two that could, could stay. But I, I guess the way that I'm thinking about this, and maybe I'm alone on this one, is that hiring an assistant with the expectation that they could be a town administrator once we go through a process is different from saying, we're gonna hire someone who definitely will be the town administrator. I'm thinking we're talking about the former in terms of succession planning. Yeah, Councilor Smith-Galvin?
I would definitely agree. You articulated it better than I was. But I think, you know, because you have this charter where we pick the town administrator, I would see, Steve, you know, we approve this position, I think you need to think about, you know, what you need and obviously taking succession planning into consideration. But I, I really think it's dangerous, actually, to hire somebody with a foregone conclusion that they're gonna be a town administrator. I think we've done that in other positions in town, if I'm not mistaken, and it hasn't worked out. So, I think people need to train, and we need to see how they work culturally and aptitude and all of that. So, I definitely am 100% behind adding a, an assistant administrator. I have been saying that for a long time, concerned about the number of direct reports. But I would really defer to Steve to figure out what that process is.
Councilor Dubrasky?
I guess like my bigger point is that I would hope that anyone that would be hired in this role would have a demonstrate all the qualities that we'd be looking for in a town administrator. So, to be clear, we'd be hiring someone with an eye towards them assuming those responsibilities. But more, more significant, equally significant to me is the fact that if we don't have that kind of arrangement in place where there is the passing down of institutional knowledge, then come mid-2026, we theoretically would have the loss of Kevin Gill and Steve Mayo. And because, because it would be Steve and Kevin, that would be kind of in that, in that leadership, you know, team. And then, how do, where's, where's the transition of all of that? You know, I don't think we have that. So, I agree, it shouldn't be a foregone conclusion that whomever would be hired into this role, but I do think that it, it's with an eye towards, hey, by the way, this is a good opportunity for you to really prove yourself, and if you do, then you obviously would have a probably very good chance, potentially, right? Amongst an applicant pool. But I think that that person at a minimum, and to your point, whomever had made it, maybe they don't want to be the town administrator, but they wanna be the assistant. That's okay, but at least they have the knowledge. They've been through it for, you know, they've been, you know, through the ropes for a couple of years, so they know what they're doing. And I think we don't have that, you know, unless Steve stays on as a consultant for like two years after, you know, he's, he's done. We don't have that.
You already said three years, and you said that was two, that's, that's five.
But I think that's, that's the point here. I don't wanna lose that knowledge because it's too important.
I would also like to point out, Mr. Mayo, we do have extension clauses in your contract, so.
Yeah, last comment, and then.
It just seems the numbers should be higher, because if we're going out to hire somebody with five years, has even an assistant town administrator, they're gonna want a fair salary. You know, and it's not, it's, it's hundred to be shared, senior accountant, it's just not enough money.
That might be, that might be step two. In my mind, that was step two.
Which is?
Step two into hiring, you know, the other person before the council talks to me.
So, if I may, the way that I was thinking of the $100,000 is that there's a portion of it that would take the existing salary for the town accountant and bump that up to a, an assistant deputy town administrator salary, and there's a portion of that that would be used to take the existing salary of a clerical staff person in the accounting department and bump them up to a senior accountant or assistant town accountant or something like that. Is that the right way of thinking about it?
Yep.
But to your point, if we were to hire from kind of whole cloth an assistant town administrator, we would not have enough with what we've, what we're talking about here.
Yep, I think I would feel just more comfortable if we did set that at whatever the market is for an assistant town administrator, have that number set baked into this budget. And then, whatever number it is for Mr. Gill to be able to put him in the role and then bring in his successor at whatever that market is. So, I think Councilor McLean makes a very important point. It's gonna be more than $100,000 ultimately, because the only, the only salary we're freeing up is that of someone who is at a lower pay scale than what we're, we're looking to fill with, right? In either position, you know, be it a senior accountant, you know, under Mr. Gill, who would then hopefully be able to take over eventually, or be it an assistant town administrator. I just think that the numbers, like, they don't, they don't work.
So, correct me, Mr. Mayo, if I'm mistaken, but this was also in a half-year.
Half a year.
Because, because the potential retirement is not expected until later in 2024. I think we were talking about a full year, I think the numbers would make more sense.
So, it's the equivalent of basically like a $200,000?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
We could increase it later on if we found out, too. We can back for supplemental, like we're doing to that on something else. November, we could come in.
Yep. All right, so, given that, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the town council budget as presented. And again, Mr. Mayo, I expect you'll be coming back to us both with sort of progress on how this actually plays out, and obviously the financial impact to the extent that that changes. We'll, we'll be talking about that again as well. So, do we have a motion to accept the budget as presented?
No.
Seconded.
Any further comment? I just wanna say thank you to Mr. Mayo and Mr. Gill. You know, it's kind of awkward to have this conversation about your futures with you in a public forum with you in the room, but I thank you both for kind of handling this professionally and putting up with, you know, what is probably not the, not the most comfortable conversation you could be sitting in tonight. Seeing no further discussion?
It's the only way to do it.
I know. Seeing no further discussion, we'll take a vote. All in favor of the budget as presented? Opposed? Motion carries 6-1. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 7C, this is a one-day liquor license for the Wakefield High School Music Boosters event. Do we have a motion to approve?
No. Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Item number eight, annual town meeting, Mr. Mayo?
Yes, there's a couple of warrant articles to, that we need for the annual town meeting. A lot of these you've seen before, you've probably seen all of them before. One is indemnification. I'd be looking for $80,000. This would be out of free cash because we would, we might use some of it this year. And this frequent article provides for payment of direct metal expenses for injuries suffered on duty by police and fire personnel. And that's because they are not covered under workers' comp because that would be an incredibly high insurance premium if they were gonna take on our public safety personnel. The reason why we put it in an article is that, you know, we might come back, next year, we might come back in two years, but we can roll it forward to cover those costs.
year, we might come back in two years, but we can roll it forward to cover those costs. We could be 25,000 for police and 55 for fire, is what we'd be looking at right now.
So I will take a motion to approve the indemnification article as presented?
So moved. Seconded.
Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Supplemental, Mr. Mayo?
Supplemental budget is also out of free cash. We've been seeing this every year, and it's normally for extended costs of overtime, what have you, in police and fire. This is entirely for fire. I think, I know that when Town Accountant Gill mentioned the fire budget, said that we would have a reserve fund transfer or supplemental budget in this area. I like using the supplemental budget, because our town meeting is in April. I don't know what may happen, which might be a true emergency between April and June 30th. And if we don't use the money in, if we don't use the money that's already in the reserve fund, it just rolls back into free cash anyway. So it's kind of just, we're putting it, doing it now, and we know it. Be 325 for personnel, for additional overtime expenses, and 25 for some expenses on the machinery. I think the fire chief mentioned that maybe there was some problems with the roads, and he had some extra costs.
Do we have a motion to approve the supplemental budget article as presented?
So moved. Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Debt service, Mr. Mayo?
Debt service, the amount is $5,359,880. And this is the annual article that funds the payments due on all of the town's borrowings for capital projects, both tax-exempt, or two and a half exempt, and non-exempt. So the exempt portion of this, which means above two and a half, is $3,283,523. That covers the Galvin and the high school projects, those are the ones that we have overrides for. I will tell you that that number will increase as we borrow more on the high school, but hopefully rates will come down, and we'll manage that well. And the $2,076,357 is on the non-exempt projects, which include public safety building, fire trucks, the school, the Walton School, and things like that, roads.
Is there a motion to approve the debt service article as presented?
So moved. Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. And the right-of-way wall easement?
Right-of-way wall easement. The reason why this is coming to town councils, because town council needs to accept it. There was a Board of Appeals approval on the corner of Hickory Hill and Greenwood Street. And if you know the property, it has a, has an existing retaining wall that isn't all that great. The Board of Appeals required the applicant to agree to this easement, because if we were going to put a sidewalk there, and we probably will, that we may need to shore that wall up for the sidewalks. This would enable us to have that done, and not have to worry about it when we're doing the actual project. And it's, I think it's a $1 cost as well. A two-thirds vote of town meeting is needed, and that would authorize the town council to sign and accept the easement.
So process-wise, so we are voting to put the article on the town meeting warrant for town meeting to approve it, and then we would then accept the easement afterwards?
And then you two-thirds vote for that. And Town Council Mullen, with an E, has already reviewed the easement.
Is there a motion to approve the easement article as presented?
So moved. Seconded.
Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Finally, we have the town meeting and town election, annual town election and annual town meeting warrant. Do we have a motion to approve those?
So moved. Seconded.
Any discussion? Just as a reminder, town meeting is starting on April 29th. It will, I would say, most definitely go to a second night, which we would expect is probably going to be Thursday, May 2nd, and then potentially, if it went to a third night, that would be the following Monday, most likely, depending on how the motion to adjourn goes. So mark your calendars. I just heard Mr. Mayo mention it might be four, but we're going to hold out hope that it's not. So motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
I do want to thank Sherri Dalton, who does a lot of work on this, and Tom Mullen, who has to read the very small print. And I read it as well, but he catches things that I don't. And I will imagine that, if you've seen the size of this, I think it's six pages long, I can imagine there being...
Seven.
Seven. I can imagine there will be a reserve fund transfer, just to put the warrant in the paper.
Absolutely. I know I've mentioned this before, but it would be great if we could have like QR codes or something at town meeting, just so, to the extent that people are able to read it, not on paper, that would be wonderful.
Do what we can, yes.
All right, moving on to item number nine, presentations. Our first is a potential amendment to the flag policy from Counselor Vincent.
Well, I'll defer, thank you Chair Chines, I'll defer to Mr. Mullen, he did the language in here, but we noticed recently that the Marine Corps flag has been flying underneath the American flag on the flagpole at Langren Field. And in order to make sure that that comports with our policy, we need to add language to paragraph three of our policy, like we did last year for the General Galvin's flag at the Galvin Middle School. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Mullen?
No.
Do we have a motion to amend paragraph three of the flag policy as presented?
So moved. Seconded.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion or questions? Counselor Dabrowski?
I would just point out that the flag policy generally is an issue at the town meeting, so I, this feels a little bit like the Warrior logo, where the, the school committee had acted before, that the town had voted on it. I understand that it's a, I'll call it even a friendly amendment, if you will, but it's still tweaking a policy that's going to be subject to town-wide input in just a matter of weeks. So I think there, no, I'm not suggesting the flag has to come down by any stretch, but I think if we just keep things status quo until we get through town meeting, and here what the town has to say about it, at that point, I think it's probably more appropriate to be addressed. I don't support this change, not because I don't support the Marine flag flying, but I have been adamant that I don't support this policy. So changes to it don't make it any more, you know, palatable. From my perspective, I think that, you know, it should be straightforward. But it just seems, it seems inappropriate to be voting on any kind of flag, any aspect of the flag policy, since we have that coming up in literally three weeks from tonight.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Vincent, and then Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Chair Chines, I appreciate that point, but there's a very, there's a distinguishing factor between the warrant article at town meeting and this amendment to our policy. This amendment to our policy will allow us to fly the Marine Corps flag, United States Marine Corps flag, underneath the American flag at the one flagpole at Langren Field, which we've been doing, it's just making sure it comports with our flag policy. If you read the warrant article, the warrant article says only the POW/MIA flag can fly under the American flag when there's one flagpole. If there's two flagpoles, you fly the Massachusetts flag, with the exception of, if you have a second flagpole at the Galvin School, you can fly General Galvin's flag. And if you have a second flagpole at Langren Field, you can fly the United States Marine Corps flag. There is no second flagpole at either one of those two locations. So there's one flagpole here at the Langren Field, and this is just making sure that the language in here, if adopted, if approved, comports with what we're currently doing. And that's what makes it different from the warrant article, because the warrant article's dealing with, if there's a second flagpole at the Langren Field, this is wholly different from that.
If I may just respond, it would, understood, I guess, as I, I'm not familiar with the article, all I know is there's an article that's on relative to the flag, but what you're describing, would that not be a friendly amendment that would be made at town meeting anyway?
I'm a real stickler that we should follow rules. And what I found by seeing the flagpole at the Marine Corps flagpole at Langren Field, is that that doesn't comport with our current flag policy. And the only law of the land right now in Wakefield on flags is our flag policy. I honestly, what's happening, the proposed warrant article at town meeting has nothing to do with my thoughts that we need to make sure that this flag policy is updated, so that the Marine Corps flag can continue to fly at Langren Field underneath the American flag.
Thank you, Counselor McLean?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think it's a minor corrective matter. I think what happens at town meeting happens at town meeting, and then if approved, it goes to the AG, and it still takes some time. I don't see that as a reason for us not to make something clear in this current policy.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion on the table is to approve the amendment to the flag policy as presented. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries by a vote of 6 to 1. Item 9B is a request to fly the Americal flag, pride flag, and Juneteenth flag on designated dates in 2024. Counselor Vincent, this is you as well.
Thank you, Chair Chines. I sent the council a copy of my request, as well as all the supporting documentation in advance, so that you had an opportunity to look it over, because I don't want to debate this for a long period of time, and I certainly don't want to speak for a long period of time on it. Let me just briefly, Steve, if you could go to the second slide for me? As I'm talking, these are the flags that are currently being flown on Wakefield town property. What I'm proposing tonight, the most important thing I want to stress, it is not a policy change. I am not proposing a change to our current flag policy, like we just did with the over at Langren Field. This is just a flag-raising request. It's not permanent. It's something that I hope can demonstrate to the community that the town council can come together on this important issue that we've been grappling with for a couple of years. The request to fly these three flags on the specific dates in my request stems from my 26 years on active duty, my service as the first vice chair of the Wakefield Human Rights Commission, and the proud father and father-in-law of my daughter Leslie and her wife Allison. I'll start with the Americal Division flag, if you can go to the next flag, thank you. In 2016, this flag was presented to the town, and it's been sitting in this box for the last few years. This flag came from the Americal Division in Ohio. I called them, I didn't know about it, but I called them this fall, when I found out about this flag, and they didn't have any more outdoor flags. So Steve assisted me in ordering a weatherborne outdoor flag from Blanchard's here in Wakefield. I purchased that flag because I didn't want to use any taxpayers' dollars for this. If you notice, when I submitted these requests, I just submitted it as Robert Evans II, and I gave you my address. I didn't request it as a town council member, because any resident of the town, including me, can make a flag request under our policy. I have April 12th down as the day to first fly the Americal Division flag, because to me, I'd like to see it up on Patriots Day, which is April 15th, but I know that day the town is closed, and I don't want to ask EPW personnel to have to come up and put the flag on their day off. I did confer with the Human Rights Commission Chair to ascertain what dates they plan to have the Pride events. They're having it on Monday, the June 3rd, as opposed to Saturday, June 1st, because they didn't want to have it on the weekend. And as far as the Juneteenth celebration, they were undecided when I had spoken with her. So I put down June 19th in this request, because that is actually the Juneteenth National Independence Day. I did explain in my email to the Human Rights Commission Chair that at that time, I was contemplating requesting flying the Americal flag on June 14th. I also provided situational awareness to the Chair of the Veterans Advisory, the Veterans Advisory Board, and I also met with Dave Bangan, our VSO, because frankly, I needed his help to have it properly fold the flag. It's a two-person process. This is just my request only. I did not ask the HRC, I did not ask the Veterans Advisory Board chairs their thoughts on my request, I just provided them simply situational awareness. I'm hoping that this serves as an opportunity to assess how the town council feels about these expressions of official town sentiment, which is what is outlined in our flag policy. And then at the end of the year, if this flag policy is approved, we can sit down and decide, do we want to make this permanent, do we want to make some changes to it? But once again, this is why it's a flag request, it is not a policy change request. It also allows us to use that second flagpole at the Americal Civic Center throughout the year. Right now, it's only used during the month of June. I do recognize that the pride flag would come down twice in the month of June if this request is passed. One would be on June 14th, which, as I outlined there in the second paragraph, that is the US Army's birthday. And since this is the first year that we would be honoring the Americal Division flag by flying it at the Americal Civic Center, I thought, after a lot of contemplation, that for this year, it might be appropriate to fly that flag on June 14th. We also, for one day, we also would be taking it down on June 19th to honor Juneteenth, the federal holiday, and in that situation, it would be taken down for a week, so that's why I have those dates in my request, and then the pride flag would go back up. If this request fails, and it may very well fail, I still will donate the flag to the town, which we will be doing later on with donations, and I will arrange with Steve and Dan McGrath to put it on display inside the Americal Civic Center. Steve, if you can go to the pride flag. The pride flag request there delineates my reasons why I think the flag, pride, the pride flag should be flown at the second flagpole at the Americal Civic Center. And then Steve, if you could go to the last slide, I delineate my reasons why I feel that the Juneteenth flag should be flown at the second flagpole at the Americal Civic Center. And then the very last slide there shows that if this request is approved, that's the number of days that all the flags in town, going back to the first slide, don't change the slide, the first slide I had, that had the flags that are currently flying, bearing in mind this is a leap year. The reason the Americal Division flag, of course, is only 235 days, is because it hasn't been flown up until now, and it wouldn't be flown during different parts of the month of June. Personally speaking, I feel that this request to fly these flags on those delineated dates is something that, as I contemplate what all different segments of my life experiences and all different segments of this town have expressed concerning flags, I think for this year, this is a request that I thought was reasonable. I took a lot of time to put this together. I know I didn't have to do this, I apologize that I'm doing it now, but I think it is important to get this done as soon as possible. And I was able to procure the Americal Division flag, that's one of the reasons I couldn't bring it up earlier, I just got possession of it about a week and a half ago. So I respectfully request that you approve my request, and I certainly understand if it doesn't get approved tonight, and like I said, I will still donate the flag, and hopefully we can put it on display at the Americal Civic Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vincent. Just a clarifying question, the request for the pride flag, is that intended to be the pride progress flag that has been flown for the last, I think, three years?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to make a motion to approve your flag request as presented?
So moved. I'm tired.
Thank you. Sorry, just wanted to give you the auditors to do that.
I appreciate that.
Any discussion or questions?
I shouldn't have done that at the beginning, sorry.
No worries. Counselor Dabrowski?
I appreciate all the thought and work that you put into this, Counselor Vincent, and I understand your rationale and logic. I'm not going to vote in support of it, just because you're aware of my position relative to flying flags generally, and the flag policy, and I think we just opened up a door. While I don't, I have no issue with the pride flag, I have no issue with the Americal flag, I have no issue with the Juneteenth flag, of course not, you know, those are all, those are all worthy, worthy flags to be flown, but there are plenty of others that get much dicier, and again, I don't think we should be in the business of choosing, you know, what we do and do not fly. So for that reason, I'll be voting against it, but it's not for lack of respect for what you've done, nor is it for lack of respect for the flags you've identified.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Counselor McLean?
I think my only response to that, Counselor Dabrowski, is that this is very, seems to me to be very similar, but for the addition of the Americal flag to the compromise that I proposed whenever it was, X amount of months ago. And I think we really only two that voted for that, because this does allow for US-only on the 14th, on Flag Day. So for that reason, I, obviously, since I made that pitch a year ago, I'm inclined to support this.
Thank you, Counselor. Other questions or comments? Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Chines, I just want to take one 30-second attempt to try to persuade you, Counselor Dabrowski. I think you and I agree that honoring General Galvin by flying the General Galvin flag makes sense at the second flagpole of the, I mean, at the one flagpole of the Galvin Middle School, and flying the United States Marine Corps flag at Langren Field honors Colonel Langren. My feeling is flying the Americal Division flag for the vast majority of the year honors those that served in the Americal Division, including many Massachusetts residents. honors those that served in the Americal Division, including many Massachusetts residents, similar to how we're honoring General Galvin at the middle school and Colonel Langrean at the Marine Corps school. And so I understand your position, but I was hoping to get you on board with the Americal Division flag. And then for this one year only, not a permanent change to our policy, because we can revisit this at the end of the year, flying the Pride flag because of the precedent that we've been doing it for years and the reason I expressed in my presentation, as well as the Juneteenth flag. So that's why I was trying to get you on board, you know, tonight, we talked this back and forth, of looking at the Americal Division flag, similar to General Galvin's four-star flag and similar to the Marine Corps flag at the Langrean Field.
Final response, sir? Please. And if you had had a motion that simply said, fly the Americal flag, I wouldn't have an issue with that. Again, and I don't, nor do I have an issue with the Pride flag or the Juneteenth flags, either of them. But the issue is that the military flags of the General Galvin, the Marine Corps, and the Americal have certain military significance to them. And in all three cases, they have a direct military connection to the facility in front of which they fly. You know, Landrean is recognition, Landrean, Galvin, the four-star general, and the Americal flag is for that, that are the military recognition. But then, when we're talking about other flags, and I'm not going to repeat myself, and I'm not going to get into a debate about this tonight, it gets back the same issue of calling the balls and strikes, and yes, Pride flag, support. Juneteenth flag, support. But then, once we open up that opportunity, then there's a lot of other closer calls than those flags that would come of that. So I think my issue is the fact that it's bundled together in the same way that I don't support the policy we just voted on. And so when you're looking to make that amendment, I have no issue with the Marine Corps flags flying at Landrean. I support that, but I don't support it in the context of a policy that I don't endorse. So I think that's where my difference of opinion is with that. So I have no issue with what you're suggesting. I think it's the fact that it's been bundled together that I think makes it problematic, because then it sets a precedent that I don't support in terms of other requests coming in for other, I'll say affinity flags or cause flags, or whatever you want to call it. And I think that's the business I don't want to see us getting into.
Thank you. Other questions or, oh, sorry.
I was just saying, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Anyone who hasn't spoken yet. Counselor Smith-Galvin.
I really appreciate this, Counselor Vincent, to try to bring us together on an issue that's been really difficult over my tenure here. I just want to clarify, so June 14, we would fly the Americal Division flag and the US flag on June 14.
On one flag pole would be the US flag and the POW/MIA flag, and the other flag pole would be the Americal Division flag.
So did I understand you, Counselor McLean, to say this is consistent with what you had wanted on your previous policy? Because this does not have the US flag flying alone. It has the Americal flag flying on the second flag pole.
Well, I thought it was consistent in the sense that the compromise I was trying to reach was to provide the US flag, you know, the primary focus on Flag Day. So you're right, it's a little different. But, you know, I don't think it's materially different, at least not in my opinion.
I'm more comfortable with this, because I really like that it celebrates the June 14 as the Americal Division.
It's the US Army's birthday.
And I think for one year, it's worth trying out. You know, I definitely was against taking down the Pride flag or the Juneteenth flag for one day to have the US flag fly solo, but I think that this rightly honors the US Army birthday and has a direct association to the building it's flying in front of, so I'm in support.
Thank you. Any other comments? I will just add, so I did vote against your proposal months ago. And I think the reason for that, at the time for me, was taking down the Pride flag and replacing it with nothing felt, quite frankly, like erasure to me. And, you know, the fact that this proposal, and I really do echo all of the comments, Counselor Vincent, from the council, with my thanks to you for pulling this together. I mean, this has been a long and fraught and difficult discussion for all of us across many, many months, and for many people in town as well. I do think that this is a reasonable path forward. And again, as Counselor Smith-Galvin said, it connects to the history of the building in an appropriate way. It creates an opportunity for dialogue. You know, is it a perfect approach that satisfies everyone in town? No. And I don't think candidly that there is any perfect approach that will satisfy everyone in town. You know, if I were working on this, you know, are there things that I would have written a little bit differently? Maybe. But I think that this is a good-faith effort to come up with a compromise that is as broadly pickable as we can get as a council. I think it is thoughtful. I think it is respectful of all of the different interests that have been expressed here, and I will myself be voting in favor of it. Counselor Danahue.
I concur with Counselor Smith-Galvin and Counselor Chines, or Chair Chines. And I just want to thank you for, you know, purchasing the Americal flag and donating it to the town. And I think that's a really great gesture, so thank you. Much appreciated.
Any further comments? Seeing none, the motion on the table is to approve the flag request from Mr. Vincent as proposed. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries six one. Onto something completely different. Item nine C, Climate Leaders. Counselor Smith-Galvin, is this your presentation?
This is my presentation. Thank you.
Julie, do you want to do it, or?
You can do it.
Okay.
I have it in front of me, so yeah, if I look up and it's. So, yeah, so we'll start with the, and Melissa Houston, who is the Chair of the Environmental Sustainability Committee, will be joining us online as well. So first apologies kind of for bringing this. I realize that this is a bit of a last-minute request, and I'm happy to go into the purposes of the timing on that, but let me start from the beginning. The state of Massachusetts has announced essentially a Green Communities 2.0 program. As you recall, we were accepted into the Green Communities in December of 2022 and have really just completed our first year of that. But with all of the climate goals at the state and all the federal funding at the federal level, there is now a new program called the Climate Leaders Communities, which will be very similar, and that'll be a grant program, and it will be designed specifically to reduce greenhouse gases using a zero-overtime approach. Just quickly, a zero-overtime approach is one in which as building HBACs or vehicles are coming to their normal end of life, that would be the time to consider a zero-emission replacement option. So to qualify for the program, you have to be a Green Community in good standing, which we are. You have to have a local body that advises the municipality on clean energy and climate initiatives, which we do in the ESC. There's a commitment to eliminate onsite fossil fuel in 2050, just for municipal buildings and operations. There's the need to create a carbonization, decarbonization roadmap, again, just for municipal purposes. There's a need to adopt a zero-emission vehicle first policy, which is kind of the next level up from the low-emission vehicle policy that we adopted under Green Communities. And then there is the need to adopt as a community the specialized opt-in building code. So we've met three of those. I do want to say that in terms of the specialized opt-in building code, the reason we have such an opportunity here is that only 33 communities have adopted that. So we are very early. That's probably the hardest of the six items on this list to achieve, and we are the first of 33 to do it. So the next slide, notice my green early bird gets the worm. Again, because we're an early adopter of the opt-in, we have an opportunity to be an early entrant into this program. The Green Communities program, we were about number 282, 283 into that program of the current 291. This one, the brand-new program, we could be one of the very early ones in. And what that translates into is grant funding. The funding for this program can be used on things like municipal solar, like we were talking about at the last meeting, purchasing solar for municipal buildings, electrification. It can be used on resiliency, which could include lake health. The lake is actually in our Mystic River watershed, which is going to be a really important resiliency tool. It can be used on tree planting and shading. It can be used in open spaces. It can even be used to seed fund sustainability staffing, which we do not have here. So these are all things we're already talking about as a council, and being part of the Climate Leaders would help us fund those. In the box to the right is just a comparison. So as I said, Wakefield became a Green Community about 12 years after the initiation of the program. And in that time, we have received $189,000. Again, we're in the first year, which is less than 1% of the $177 million that this program has granted over the last 10 to 12 years. Melrose, our neighbors and competitors to the south, I guess, they were in the very first round of designees. They have received about just under $2 million in direct funding, and they've leveraged about another $2 million just by virtue of being an early mover in the Green Communities. So it's an opportunity, but it definitely comes with some things that we need to think about. The reason that the urgency, next slide, Steve. The reason for the urgency for this is that the state announced in early March a technical assistance grant that would pay 100% of consultant fees to assist towns in developing their decarbonization roadmap. And we do not have sustainability staffing. You know, we're spread thin. This technical assistance grant would really give us the expertise and the discipline to get the decarbonization roadmap in place. It would augment our staff. It would augment volunteer time. We have a lot of volunteers who are willing to work on this. But having that expertise would be really, really critical. The application to get this technical assistance grant is a letter of a commitment from the Chief Executive Officer of the town that we will meet all Climate Leader community requirements, which were those six I noted on the first page, within a year to 15 months of the technical assistance award, documentation that we have established an energy committee, which we just need to provide the latest minutes from the ESC committee, a screenshot of the ESC report, which is essentially our energy database that we're already using for Green Communities, and which frankly, we have a really good, we have a really good grasp on in Wakefield because of our municipal utility, that we do both electricity and natural gas. So that's going to be really helpful, and then an indication of our progress towards the Climate Leaders. So just some signing off saying we've done three of those six. Kind of long-term, our goal would be to become a Climate Leaders. We would really like if we could get this technical assistance grant, or maybe even without it, but if we didn't get it, it should hopefully put us in place to be able to apply in one of the early rounds of funding by the end of 2024. So tonight's ask is to pursue the technical assistance grants, which does require this letter of commitment that Wakefield will meet the requirements within a year of the grant. The grant is due April 12, but we have spoken with Ann Waite. We've spoken with Steve. If the council does feel comfortable moving forward, then we believe we can definitely meet that deadline. And then over the next three to nine months, we'd work on these other requirements. The ESC would come and talk about a zero-emissions vehicle first policy, the 2050 fossil fuel commitment, and then the decarbonization roadmap, and then hopefully be approved in 2024 and start being able to access some of those grants, again, for things that we want to do anyway, so. And there's some language here that I thought might just be easier to have written. So I am open to questions. I know that while this program notice went on the street in March, the ESC really didn't find out about this till the end of March when they did a presentation. So we didn't have any kind of staff looking at it, so this has been all volunteer brought forth, which is why it was brought forth at the end of March, so we're here as soon as we can.
Counselor Smith-Galvin, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Make a motion that the town council direct Steve Mayo to apply for this grant using language as presented. Seconded.
All right. Discussion, Counselor McLean.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Counselor Smith-Galvin did.
Smith-Galvin did. Yes. Was this ever vetted by your entire committee? Because I watched your April 4 meeting. I think that was a subcommittee meeting.
Yes, the entire committee voted on this.
February 8.
February 8, yeah.
So Amy Lehman was involved in that?
I don't know whether she was there that day.
But we need to get tie-in from the schools as well.
Yeah, so the school tie-in would have to come in on the zero-emission vehicle first policy, because the superintendent would have to sign that. The municipal buildings, the town really kind of does a lot of that work anyway. I did, Counselor Vincent asked me that question earlier today. I did reach out to Superintendent Lyons, and we had a big meeting on energy, actually, with the schools two or three weeks ago, and we spoke about transportation issues. Most of their transportation is done through a contract with North Reading Transport, and so they would definitely have to sign a policy like this. That policy, when it comes to contracting vehicles, says that they would have to go out to bid and include lower emissions as part of their bid documents. So they could definitely.
So this particular grant, though, is only for consultants to assist with the decarbonization plant?
Yes.
But it does, from your meeting, I learned that it also does require us within a year to do numbers five and six, which I consider to be a little more elaborate. Would that be fair?
Do numbers three, four, and five.
Yeah, okay, whatever the numbers are. Just as an example, we've talked about millions of dollars, and I know what you're saying when you talk about the zero, you know, as things need to replace, but we're going to have millions of dollars in fire equipment. Have you looked into how much more expensive an electric pumper is? Because I have an idea that it's significantly more expensive.
Right.
And I'm not so sure. The Commonwealth is going to give us the difference?
No. I mean, they, and a lot of these don't have to happen until like 2030.
Well, our pumpers are coming, whether we like it or not, they're coming.
Right. And there may not even be electric zero emissions. To the extent that there's not something on the market that is, you know, comparable or even available, then you don't have to do it. It's exactly like.
There's a company in Minnesota that's been doing this. LA has it. takeover has it. It's out there. They're almost twice as expensive. They're backed up by a diesel generator in case they run out of charge, which is fossil fuel, as we know, so I'm not sure how that falls into all this. To me, there are many unknowns and many expenses, you know. We can still, right, we can still go for grants under Green Communities, right? I mean, we don't have to be one of these communities to seek grants. We got $189,000 in the first year as a Green Community.
Right, that was just, yes, there will still be grants under Green Communities. There will be more grants under Climate Leaders. And in terms of, you know, no, I don't know anything about electric pumpers and all of that, but this is, there are 351 communities in Massachusetts, and the Department of Energy Resources has been really, really good about working with communities and what's available in the market, and they know what is out there. So, you know, in my experience, they have not required anything unreasonable.
Have you been in contact with the police relative to whether they're ready to go with a fully EV?
I've spoken with Chief Scory about electric vehicles. We heard from the Capital Planning Committee when they were here that they did consider it. At this point.
We have a current policy, but the new policy, I think, would be a lot stricter, wouldn't it?
It would have, we would have to look at it. We would have to look at what the policy is.
Right. My problem is voting on something tonight under a rush for a grant that's only going to do the decarbonization plant and only going to do a consultant, who doesn't net us any necessary money, when we have all these costs coming at us that we've been talking about all night tonight, and now we're perhaps adding a large factor to those costs.
Which is why I knew that we had to come to you. I completely agree. I do think that this is a very new program. The DOEAR is trying to figure it out, and I think that we would be part of trying to figure that out if we got into the program.
And I see, you know, there are some communities, but it's a handful, and other than Melrose, I mean, a lot of them are city-based, you know, and maybe better able to leverage than we would be, but.
You mean in the Green Communities program?
The ones that have signed on to this program.
No, nobody's in this program yet. There is not a single community in this.
We would be the first?
Well, the program just started in March. We would be the first to maybe apply for it, but nobody has been accepted into it.
In terms of this program itself, the Climate Leaders started in November of '23, didn't it not? That's what I'm seeing on the website.
It was announced then, but the first round to become a Climate Communities is July of this year. We didn't think we could make July of this year, which is why if we got the technical assistance grant, we would try to get in in December of this year. So no, nobody is in this program, which is why if we get in and we find there are, you know, kind of major obstacles, I think we could talk to the Department of Energy Resources, and they are just. And they are just promulgating things.
I understand. I'm very skeptical about the cost.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Chair Chines. By the way, we have, we have a full fuel efficiency program, which is different than the zero emission vehicle policy that we would have to adopt. So I'll be candid, I had a lot of concerns about this. I spent a lot of time over the weekend. I looked at eight of the webinar presentations that are on the back of the Climate Leader Communities website. I had a conversation today with Dylan Patel and followed up by numerous emails. He's the regional coordinator for Green Communities. I then forwarded my emails to Counselor Smith Galvin so she had awareness of the questions that I was asking this gentleman. I was very concerned with the zero emission vehicle first policy portion of this because we do have to make that commitment. And I did ask Counselor Smith Galvin to make sure that she contacted the superintendent of schools because why, he didn't have to be part of the application. If we're making the commitment, we're going to have this first policy when we produce it in a year and present it to the state, he has to sign a separate letter from the one that the town administrator signs. So I thought that he needed to be aware of that, and now he has been. What I will tell you, that Mr. Patel told me that we have about a 60% chance of getting this grant if we apply because we've only satisfied three of the six requirements so far. So we have a chance of getting the grant. The other thing I asked him to clarify for me about the zero emission vehicle first policy is I said, if we adopt the policy and then a year from now it's in place, are we going to immediately have to replace our vehicles, our town vehicles with, you know, these zero emission vehicles? And then he and I talked about it. And then we found on what's called the Climate Leader Communities Roadmap Assistance, which was promulgated March 2024 by the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources. It has a suggestion to municipalities on what the timeline should be for converting to zero emissions. For light duty fleets, and I don't know how that's defined right now, but they say for zero emission vehicles and light duty fleets, as far as the adoption, your goal should be 5% of your inventory by 2027, 20% by 2030, 75% by 2040, and 100% by 2050. And I clearly share Counselor McLean's concerns about the fire equipment. So I looked at heavy vehicle fleets. And for your heavy vehicle fleets, it's 0% by 2027, it's 20% by 2030, 50% by 40, and 100% by 2050. Now, at first, Mr. Patel wrote to me, and he actually said, now, I recommend waiting for next year's solicitation because they're going to do this grant again next year so that all stakeholders are on board and the other criteria can be met. Because he said we could go forward on our own on the zero emission vehicle first policy and on the commitment to eliminate onsite fossil fuel use by 2050 because that's a declaration from the town. But then he spoke with his supervisor, who got back to me and had a different recommendation. And that recommendation was to actually go forward with the application this year for the grant because we might as well try to do it this year. And if we get it, we probably aren't going to meet that deadline of nine months from now, December 2024, to get all the remaining three of these things done, including the municipal decarbonization roadmap. But when I see that the subject matter expert has now told me, after consulting with his supervisor, that we ought to apply this year, I've done a 180. If you asked me this question at 1 o'clock this afternoon, I would have been voting against this tonight. But in light of the work I did and the conversations I had with the subject matter experts, I'm in favor of voting for it now.
Thank you. Can I just ask a clarifying question on process? So the grant, if we do get the technical assistance grant, is that a refundable or kind of, are they able to claw back that grant if we don't meet the deadline?
There's nothing written on that. And there's not even a, I mean, it's a consultant, it's not even.
Yeah. So I guess the, you know, so let's say we don't meet the deadline to get these three things that we would try to do within a year. I mean, effectively, then, we just wouldn't be in the Climate Leaders Program, right? There's nothing, no one's pulling anything back.
That's what, that was the indication I got in my conversation.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate the clarification. Counselor Dabrowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I generally like being first. This is one area where I do not want to be first. This, what we're talking about here is making a significant commitment on the part of the town that has not really in any way been vetted. And I appreciate all the work you've done, Counselor Smith Galvin. And I know that you're, you are an expert in all such things. And I know that, you know, you're, you have the point of view on that. I have a lot of open questions, not the least of which are what Counselor McLean raised in relation to the costs. I want to be able to understand that in real dollars, what we're talking about here. Because what we're doing is we're, in essence, four hours into a town council meeting, for the first time, we're learning this information. We're being, you know, asked to make significant, a significant decision that could have significant repercussions for our community, financially and otherwise. I think this is the sort of thing that is worthy of some sort of input from the community. We have none of that. We're just basically, seven of us are going to decide tonight, after this first presentation, whether we're going to commit Wakefield to be this community that meets all these criteria. And we don't have to do that. I don't think it's, I don't think it's a good idea. I think it's a dangerous idea at this point in time. I think we need to make sure we have the stakeholders and the residents and the taxpayers, you know, all kind of brought together into this to understand, okay, these are the repercussions, or this is what this means. I know the idea of, you know, 2050 is like this year that even from the federal level all the way down to state level has become a bit of a moving target in a lot of ways because a lot of projections are already not being met in the same, in a way that they had originally been anticipated. And I don't feel comfortable doing this. I think that this, I think it would be elected officials malpractice to commit the town at this point, to this, to commit in this way. It's not just applying for a grant. It's saying, we're going to be transformative in the way that we define Wakefield. And I don't think we should be doing that without hearing from people, without this being out in the public square for some sort of, you know, discussion. And it just feels like, candidly, it's kind of being forced through, you know, at the 11th hour, and we're just going to kind of slide it through. And then, oh, by the way, and then I know, in three months, we're going to say, well, we have to meet this qualification criteria because we approve this. And that's how it becomes, oh, then, then, you know, what, what is, oh, speculative, or we can always get out of it, becomes, oh, no, we've committed to this, so now we have to do these things. And that's not the right approach here. Certainly open to, you're considering this going forward. We'll have two new members in a matter of, what, three weeks, two, two and a half weeks, whatever it is. And I think that at that point, we should have a more robust discussion that actually involves stakeholders and the community. I'd like to see some firm numbers of what we're talking about here. I think that matters. In the same way, Counselor McLean, when you raised about the solar panels, I think that's a, that's a very important thing. And I think you had far more information in terms of the specifics of the numbers. And even then, it wasn't something that was readily adopted by this body. And I certainly, you know, and in support of anything we can do that is going to be more environmentally friendly, this, I think, is not just a step too far, but several steps too far. And I just, I do not feel comfortable doing this. And I don't think that the people who are, who are paying the taxes or who have voted into office would expect us to be acting in this way. I think it's careless.
Thank you, Counselor Butt.
So can we just hear from Melissa? Because it did go to a town group who talked about it, right? So can we, can we hear what the discussion was at the ESC? I don't think it's fair to say that nobody in town looked at this. They obviously looked at it, right?
A subcommittee.
A subcommittee, yep.
No, a committee, it wasn't a subcommittee.
It's a committee.
Sorry, let's let Melissa address that.
Hi, everyone. Yeah, so the full ESC voted in February to go forward with applying for the Climate Leaders Program for all the reasons that Julie has already stated. You know, we think that, you know, Wakefield has kind of been a bit behind in these initiatives. Stating that what Julie said, we're, you know, at the end of the green communities program. So this is our chance to be at the front of the Climate Leaders Program. And we already adopted the Specialized Energy Code, which is way ahead of all the other, a lot of other communities. So we have the momentum right now. And, you know, we really just want to, you know, make a step forward in taking a commitment to address climate change in this way, to be part of the Climate Leaders Program. And, you know, we'll get a lot of grant money in return. And we just think that this is the way forward at this time.
Thank you, Melissa. Any comments from anyone who hasn't spoken yet?
Can I ask Melissa a question?
Sure.
Melissa, was your school committee member part of that February meeting?
I would have to look at the attendees list. I'm not sure if she was at that meeting.
Any other comments or questions? I'll just sort of add, you know, my sort of two cents on this. I, so what we're being asked to do today is not to adopt any particular policies. I think what we're being asked to do is to commit to working on policies for the sake of getting a technical assistance grant to help us do the research that I think, you know, Counselor McLean and Counselor Dabrowski are talking about. Candidly, I don't see this as risky. You know, if we work on these policies and when they come back to this council and when they come back to the public for discussion, if we find that they're not feasible, we don't adopt them and we don't move forward. I think what we're really doing today is just seeking funds to help us explore that, you know, bring in some technical expertise that I think is important to work on some of these things. You know, we've talked about, you know, sort of finding other sources of funding for things that we need to do. And this feels to me like a very simple way of doing that. You know, I'm supportive of it. I don't think that that necessarily means that I'm saying I'm supportive of a, an electric vehicle first policy. I think we have to see the details for it. But I expect that, you know, kind of applying for this grant is part of the process of spending more time to explore that robustly. Any other discussion, again, anyone who hasn't spoken yet? No, Counselor McLean?
I couldn't disagree with you more.
I expected that.
How do I disagree with you? Let me count the ways. If you had watched the April 4th meeting, the meeting basically said, we will, we will seek this grant and then the council will have to go forward with the other items. Now, I watched all 142 minutes of it, so I can tell you that. And I wouldn't endeavor to vote in favor of this if I wasn't planning to do those other things because that's the vote we're taking. The vote we're taking is to do, that we are now committed to doing those things. We are asking, and I do want to ask Counselor Moeen as to whether the CEO, who I don't think is Steve, it might be all of our signatures that are required because the CEO is only mentioned once in the charter, and it's us seven. But either way, I'll ask him that question. But I would think that we would be in good faith pursuing these items. And I think it's just so premature. You know, has the police chief really been vetted on this? Has the school committee been vetted on this? Has the fire been vetted on this? We haven't had, and forget public participation. We have, the public knows nothing of this. I don't vote on this thinking that we're going to, oh, well, if we get it, we do. If we don't, we don't. No, I think this is, we move forward on these other items. And we do it in earnest. And we're doing it, as Counselor Dabrowski said, with a couple of new people.
I think we pursue in earnest, but pursue and adoption are two different things. I think the next steps, if we do the, have this grant as part of the evaluation, is to do all of these things that you've talked about. I completely agree that we need to follow those steps. But to me, this discussion is about, you know, do we seek a technical assistance grant that allows us to follow that process or not? Candidly, I don't see how we even follow that process without technical assistance. I don't think we have the wherewithal in terms of staff support right now within, within town government to do any of this without seeking a grant.
Well, we've had, we've had those folks too before. They would disappear on June 30th, and then in the middle of the MVTA process. And that's as far as your grant got you. And then all of our town employees had to pick it up and take over. So, and you mentioned the solar, Counselor Dabrowski. That is the only plan at our last meeting that had any significant.
So let's focus on what we're talking about today. Counselor Dabrowski.
So I do take issue with it. This is just something we're exploring. It's not, in fact, it was presented as we're making a commitment, that we're committing the town of Wakefield. And you would agree, Counselor.
Well, that's the language that we have to say.
Yeah, we're saying, we would have to say, we're committing, we've done three of six. And we have to commit to all six in order for, and we're saying that in good faith, we're filing this, this application, making the commitment on the town of, after the town of Wakefield saying we're committing to do all six things. That's exactly what this is doing. And that is, that is incredibly inappropriate. I mean, you mentioned, let's not forget facilities, too. Like, let's think about that whole piece of it. I mean, there are so many different elements here that we have no idea with. I mean, a casual conversation with Chief Scory, I don't think that, that's, that's not doing due diligence. We had the school committee here, nothing came up relative to that tonight at all, you know, relative to that. I mean, it would have been an opportunity to at least have heard something relative to it. And there's no urgency here. It's like, oh, if we do it now, we can be the first. So we don't do it now. We wait. We spend the year, we see where things land, and then we can go back and apply next year. It's a brand new program. Like, literally, back on, in February, was it 7th or whatever, the 4th, whatever the date was, when that was voted on, this grant wasn't even available because you said this came out the end of March.
Well, we knew it was coming, but we weren't sure.
Well, you knew something was coming, but you didn't have any details. So like, am I surprised that the concept of environmentally, you know, friendly, you know, opportunities would be supported by the Environmental Sustainability Committee? I'm not. So like, so when you're talking kind of like globally in February, you, there was consensus amongst the committee. I'm not surprised by that. But this grant literally just came out within, or, you know, the specifics came out within, it sounds like, the last two weeks. So the fact that we're going to like, yeah, we're all on board, we're committing, we're committing the town of Wakefield to do all these things, I want to even understand what half of this would even mean for us in practical terms, not only just financially, but also practically speaking. We don't know any of that yet. You know, we can look at this, okay, we've checked off three, three more. Are we wanting to go in that direction? If so, what does that mean? What are the consequences, both positive and negative, of doing three, four, and five? We don't know that yet. And people, I think, are entitled to be able to have some kind of input. And I think we're entitled to have informed decision-making here.
Counselor, Counselor Vincent, Counselor Daney, and then Counselor Smith Galvin.
You haven't spoken yet.
I have not.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I don't know. Adopt a zero emission vehicle first policy. It's not saying next year. I mean, based on what Counselor Vincent shared with us, it's actually pretty far out. And I would think that we'd be going there regardless of whether we have this grant or not, that that, I mean, it seems like a pretty, kind of where we should be going anyway. And so I understand if it was like next year and, you know, as soon as a vehicle, I'd be a little bit more concerned. But based on what Counselor Vincent shared, it seems like it's, this seems like it's more just our commitment to it as a community. And then going forward is something that I would think that we would be doing anyway because I think by the time that it does go into effect, by the time it does go into effect, it's going to be kind of old news. Everybody's going to be doing it, I think.
How do you know that?
So.
How about, just because of everything?
Just a second, please. Counselor Daney, I'll let you finish, and then it's Counselor Vincent and Counselor Smith Galvin.
I would say, how do I know that? Just based on what we're hearing, what we're looking, if you're looking at following this, where we're headed, where, where we're going, where technology is headed, what, what we're learning? I think that it's, I think it absolutely, I think absolutely that, I don't know, by 2040, you know, a zero emission heavy fleet adoption of 50%? I don't, I just think that that's where, I think that that is where we are heading based on everything that I'm hearing on, from CNBC to every, you know, everything that I'm reading.
Counselor Vincent.
Oh.
Sorry, Melissa, we'll get to you after Counselor Vincent.
I was just going, thank you, Chair Chines. Like I said, in my conversation with the regional coordinator, I mean, if the council's not comfortable with going forward with an application tonight, the alternative is there is going to be an application process next year. The town on its own can work on the, the zero, what's the word again?
Decarbonization roadmap.
No, we can't work on the decarbonization. That's be the roadmap. That'd be the one we'd apply for next year. In the interim, we can work on the zero emission vehicle first policy, and we can work on the declaration to eliminate onsite fossil fuel. Doesn't mean we have to pass those. We can work on those. That's the alternative. We work on them internally. And then next March, April timeframe, we could apply for the grant to help us with the last one, which is the multiple decarbonization roadmap. Now, what Mr. Patel indicated to me, if we went that route, then we would have four or five of the six requirements fulfilled by next year, by doing two, one or two on our own. And then we could apply to get the help with the decarbonization roadmap. And because we would have satisfied five out of six, our chances are enhanced that we're going to get the grant. And that's the alternative if the council's not comfortable with submitting the application for this April. We can do, we can still move forward on these other initiatives, just internally. That doesn't mean approve and adopt a zero emission vehicle first policy. That means working on something. That's the alternative. And then next year, we go back and we say, okay, now help us with the decarbonization roadmap.
Thank you, Counselor. Ms. Houston?
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to the, the question about Amy Lehman and the vote, ESC vote for this, the Climate Leaders. She did vote in favor of the Climate Leaders Program, so I just want to state that. The other thing is about the zero emission vehicle policy. I mean, it's, it's really when, when the vehicles are at the end of their useful life. So if, you know, we have cars that are, you know, police cars that we just bought recently or within the last five years or so, we won't have to replace them for zero emission vehicles until, you know, probably 10 years from now, or however long we keep our vehicles. So it's just, we're not going to like go and like get rid of all our vehicles all at once. It's just going to be at the end of their useful life, we're going to prioritize the electric vehicle. If that does not work for some reason, we go down to plug-in hybrid, we go down to hybrid. There's a prioritization list for the zero emission vehicle policy. It's not just we have to get all battery electric vehicles. So I just wanted to clarify that. And also regarding the, you know, working on all the other requirements for the grants with the next year, you know, I think if we don't make the commitment and apply for the grant now, we're not going to have the impetus to work on these things in the next year. We need to make the commitment now, and then work, and then we will have that commitment in order to work on all the other things, all the other requirements for the grant. I don't, I don't see us really making that commitment if we, in, in following up on all these requirements, if we don't make the commitment now.
Thank you. And Counselor Smith Galvin will give you the last comment before we move on.
Sure. Um, a couple of things. The Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department already has heavy vehicles that are electric, and they would count towards our commitments, whatever they are. So they're already really out in front doing this. There is opportunity for community input that's really kind of by definition what the municipal decarbonization roadmap works on. I really, I completely understand where you're coming from. I, I do. I think, you know, Counselor Dubrowski, to call it elected official malpractice is, is enrages me, because climate change is a existential issue. As Counselor Danahy said, this is really where the world is going. There are billions of dollars being put into this, kind of in technology and in federal grants. And I think we're going to be here already in two or three years. And Wakefield's going to be a leader in this. And to not, you know, to not put us in a leadership position is a real lost opportunity and a real disservice to future generations and to our leadership.
I appreciate if you don't cut off conversation.
I think we've covered ground, unless there is sort of new information to share or new questions, you know, I think we've.
I think it's a valid point.
The last point, then, not to repeat something we've shared already.
No, I've, I've been thinking in my mind about the heavy equipment. And if the pumpers need to be replaced in the next five years, and if that means, under the graph from the specialists that you talked to, Counselor Vincent, that we don't necessarily have to make them electrified just yet, and we buy pumpers that have a 20-year life, which we know they do, because that's the end of the life that we're now at, then in the late 2040s, those vehicles will not meet that, whatever the 40%, or the 50%, or the 60% is. So I'm just saying, we really don't know enough about this to commit, in my opinion, at this point in time.
Thank you. We'll, we'll cut off discussion there. A motion on the table's been made and seconded to instruct Mr. Mayo to apply for the Climate Leaders Community Technical Assistance Planning Grant. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 5-2. All right. Item number 10, donations. We have donations in the amount of $270 to the council on aging. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the donations with thanks.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Item 10B, we have a motion to accept a donation of the Americal Division flag from Counselor Vincent. Do we have a, or do we have a motion to accept?
We have a motion to accept the donation of the flag by Robert Vincent II and Tracy Vincent, in their individual citizen capacities, with thanks.
Is there a second?
Second.
And just wanted to again echo the thanks of the council for, for the gesture.
Okay, you're going to have to indulge me for just one moment. The flag has been donated to the town, and the flag is going to be officially presented to the town administrator.
We didn't vote on it yet.
We haven't, it's true, we haven't accepted yet technically.
Yeah.
All right. Well, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Counselor Vincent, and thank you to Tracy as well. Now you can sit back down. Item 10C, donations to the library in the amount of $25,550. Do we have a motion to approve, accept?
Motion to accept with thanks.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Item number 10D, do we have a motion to donate library discards to the Friends of the BB Library?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Yes, Counselor Dubrowski?
Can I just ask, so is this going to continue to add to the, to the stockpile of books that Friends of Library is having? Because the reason I ask is because we, it seems like the responsibility has been falling, our expectations have been falling more on the town, that we then have to be able to house all of these books. Is that, is that what we're talking about relative to this donation?
Counselor, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayo, I don't know if you have a way of answering that.
They are discards that the library doesn't want them, so it goes to the Friends, then they'll hold a sale of those items. So I guess yes. My answer to your question would be yes.
That just seems like an issue that has yet to be resolved, and I think it needs to be resolved at some point, because I think we're just continuing to add to the, to the challenge. But I think that'll have to come up in a future meeting.
Counselor McLean?
I would just say that I made a motion and it failed. So I think right now, they're on their own, and they know they're on their own. So let's let them do what they need to do. They can figure it out. They're smart people.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. And then finally, item 10E is a donation of $100 to the youth council. Do we have a motion to accept?
Motion to approve with thanks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Item number 11 is appointments. So we had for most of the committees, either the exact number of appointments to fill the seats that were open, or a smaller number of appointments, with the exception of the zoning board of appeals. So I will entertain a motion to approve the slate of appointees to all of the committees under discussion tonight, with the exception of the zoning board of appeals.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion on the motion? I do want to just say thank you again to everyone who applied. We do have some committees that had a smaller number of applicants than open slots, and so those will be, those will be re-advertised and certainly would encourage people to continue to apply for those. These are some really important groups, and we'd love to have full slates in every group. Counselor Vincent?
I'm sorry, Chair Chines, I do have a point to make before we vote, especially consulting with Mr. Mullen. So there's two of the commissions that cause me a little bit of concern. I publicly just want to bring it up. So the Conservation Commission is only going to have five members, because they had, they're allowed to have seven, only have one person apply, three people are leaving, they have five. So if we're going forward, their quorum is three out of five, even though they're allowed to have seven members.
That's right. There's a regulation of the Department of Environmental Protection that covers that.
And then the Human Rights Commission is also going to go down to five members. Now, they're allowed to have 11 members, but at the end of this month, they're going to only have five. So going back to Wakefield General Bylaw 9-22B, their quorum is going to be three out of five. Because I think they had some confusion that they're allowed to have 11 members, that their quorum was six, which it wasn't. They had seven, so it was four out of seven. But now that they're going down to five, they have a quorum if they have three out of five. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think our bylaw distinguishes between appointed and elected committees.
That's correct.
That's right. And for an appointed committee, the rule is a quorum is a majority of those actually serving in office.
That's correct. I just want to make sure those that are, have less than they're allocated, understand what their quorum requirements are.
Right.
Thank you, Chair Chines.
Thank you, Counselor Vincent. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to appoint the applicants to each committee except for the zoning board of appeals? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. For the zoning board of appeals, do we have a motion?
Motion to appoint, reappoint, actually, Charles Tarbell as a voting member of the ZBA, and to appoint three alternative members, Kasumi Humphries, Greg DeMergen, and Kristen Brown.
Is there a second?
There's a second, although associate members, not assistant members.
I'm sorry.
I don't know if it makes a difference, but just.
Actually, just to clarify that, I think it is alternate members.
Alter, great.
You're right. It says alternate right there.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. And again, thank you to everyone who applied. Please don't forget to get sworn in at the town clerk's office. And for those of you who are newly applied, please don't forget to take your state ethics training. Item number 12, approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the town council minutes of March 25th, 2024?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Item number 13, do we have any announcements? I will say again, check the town website. There's actually a lot going on, as always, a lot of great events that I think, because of the time, we won't go into. But please check those out and join us for some of those. Counselor Butt?
Just really quickly, want to wish everyone a happy eve on Wednesday. And I want to thank my colleagues for allowing me to snack during our meetings and break my fast, but only one more day, so thank you. Happy eve, everyone.
Almost there.
Twenty-nine days went quickly.
Yes, Counselor McLean?
Very, very quickly. As people may or may not know, there have been interviews of the three candidates for this town council.